Good evening, good evening everyone. Welcome to the June 18, 2024 meeting of the Carrboro Town Council. And we do have an announcement before we get started from Councilmember Posada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For everyone here, we do have Susan from Chicle as interpreter who will be providing interpretation for this evening. Anyone who is not bilingual, in this case speaks English and Spanish, and wants to hear any public comment that is delivered in Spanish, please go to the back of the room where you'll have the opportunity to get the equipment to hear simultaneously. Para todos en el cuarto, que quizás no sepan inglés y español, tenemos a Susan de Chicle, una interpretadora que va a estar haciendo interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español. Si necesitan el equipo para poder participar, por favor vayan a la parte de atrás de este cuarto para recibir su equipo. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Posada. We will now have Mr. Jay Bryan to come up and open our meeting with a poem. Welcome, Mr. Bryan.
Council persons, my name is Jay Bryan. I'm a resident of Carrboro.
I'm the resident of Carrboro. This poem I wrote and read at the 2011 Poetry Festival when I first became poet laureate at that time. And it's dedicated to our current, the reading is dedicated to our current poet laureate, Liza Wolf Rances. The title of the poem is "We've Got Attitude." Once baby sister of Chapel Hill, but no more. Now, this is dated, so bear with me. Once baby sister of Chapel Hill, but no more. We've got attitude. Got our own anarchistic book fair, radio station, newspaper, comedy theater, film, music, and poetry festivals. Who's playing at the cat's cradle? Blind Guardian, Big Mama E. and the Cool, and Carolina Chocolate Drops. We sell deluxe beer starter kits, tacos and sandwiches named the hippie, and support a food co-op with buffalo and goat meat. Heads up, drivers, everyone walks or bikes. We've got lanes and trails to prove it, and the J-Bus can take us anywhere. Our farmer's market sits on a baseball field. Sparrow's Pool emerges from ivy. Carrboro graded school, now our town hall. Our Sundry Center was once a Baptist church. We recycle trash and buildings. Hula hoops swivel on summer's Thursday Thursdays. Children's swing dance and someone's preaching the right to peaceably assemble. A six-point buck grazes on Domino's lawn. Guinea hen's coo beside the bypass. And new news, quote, distraught owner's parrot is found. Unleashing dogs and cats is on the alterman's agenda. We drive meals on wheels, save a neighbor from being deported. Evergreen wreaths protect against evil spirits. And mistletoe is released from a tree with a pellet gun. We have a community garden club with its refined list of locally native plants, awarded Tree City USA every year, even with our own lumberyard. Many members, one body. Once corn mill rollers, sitters, and smudders, blacksmiths and farmers, now writers and professors, carpenters, chefs, CNAs, housekeepers, and homemakers. We even have our own consecrated day, celebrated in May, and a haiku weekend, though not the same date as the community dinner. Earth is first, Bolin Creek is a close second. Yes, we care, you bet we care. We have the most committees and task force per capita in North Carolina. Tastiest water and welcoming. We welcome foxes, raccoons, turkey vultures, and Yankees in flight. We love peace, care for our veterans too, and hunger for good news. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir, we still display our southern manners. But we've also got attitude. We're Carrboro, we're the world. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. I could get our Chief Fris and Equity Officer Anita Jones McNair, who will be accepting the Juneteenth proclamation. If I could join me at the podium, welcome. Juneteenth, whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national commemoration of the emancipation of enslaved African Americans in the United States. And whereas on June 19th, 1865, Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston Island, Texas with approximately 2,000 troops. The Civil War had ended the previous month, and these Union forces were tasked with taking control of Texas and enforcing the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas that same day, on the balcony of Ashton Villa, General Granger read his General Order Number Three, which stated, and I quote, "The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of personal rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves. And the connection heretofore existing between them becomes that between employer and hired labor." And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation had been signed by President Abraham Lincoln on September 22nd, 1862, but the slaves in Texas were unaware of it until being told by General Granger. Reaction to the news ranged from jubilation to shock, and the freed slaves took to the streets to celebrate. And whereas in the years that followed, June 19th was commemorated by the holiday of Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th. And whereas on January 1st, 1980, Texas became the first state to recognize Juneteenth as a state holiday. And on August 23rd, 2007, North Carolina approved Session Law 2007-450, an act recognizing Juneteenth National Freedom Day in North Carolina. And whereas although Juneteenth is not a North Carolina state holiday, on July 14th, 2020, the Carrboro Town Council adopted a resolution designating Juneteenth as an official paid holiday for town employees and urged state and federal legislators legislators to sponsor legislation, making Juneteenth an official state and federal holiday. And whereas on June 17th, 2021, the United States Congress approved the Juneteenth National Independence State Act, and President Joe Biden signed the bill the following day, making Juneteenth National Independence Day a federal holiday. And whereas the annual Chapel Hill Carrboro, the fourth annual, actually, Chapel Hill Carrboro Juneteenth Celebration was held on Sunday, June 16th, sponsored by the Chapel Hill Carrboro NAACP, the Chapel Hill Carrboro NAACP Youth Council, the Marion Cheek Jackson Center for Saving and Making History, the Chapel Hill Carrboro City Schools Office of Equity and Engagement, and the towns of Carrboro and Chapel Hill. We fellowshiped, we enjoyed music, we enjoyed the speakers, vendors, and my favorite, we ate amazing food. And now, therefore I, Barbara M. Fushii, Mayor of the Town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, to be a date for the celebration of Juneteenth National Independence Day in Carrboro. I encourage all residents to carry the spirit of Juneteenth with them all year long and learn more about the history of Juneteenth. This the 18th day of June 2024. Ms. Anita Jones McNair, would you like to share some comments? And I will present this to you. Thank you so much.
So thank you, members of the council, for your leadership. Thank you for acknowledging significant events such as this one throughout our history. It is so important to make sure that we acknowledge inequities that have occurred throughout the years and to not only acknowledge them, but to unpack them so that as we begin to move forward with a more equitable Carrboro. So thank you so much.
I also did want to acknowledge the absence of Town Manager Patrice Tony this evening. She's away on a family matter. But we do have our esteemed Assistant Town Manager Marie Parker sitting in the big chair tonight, so we're grateful for that. Mr. J.G. Ferguson, there he is. He's sharp as a border health. I see you, J.G. You look nice. Recreation and Parks Month, proclamation for Recreation and Parks Month. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the National Park and Recreation Association designated the theme of this year's celebration as "Where You Belong", hashtag "where you belong". And whereas this year's theme, "Where You Belong", celebrates the many ways parks and recreation professionals across the country foster a sense of belonging in their community by providing welcoming and inclusive programs, essential services for all ages and abilities, and safe, accessible spaces to build meaningful connections. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities because they help establish and maintain good quality of life. They contribute to the health of residents, and they support the economic and environmental well-being of the community and the region. And whereas parks and recreation programs promote healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation for residents with disabilities, and improve the physical and emotional health of all residents. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, produce habitat for wildlife, add to the ecological beauty of the community, and provide spaces for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the Town of Carrboro strives to maintain safe and healthy park amenities for all ages, and the town strives to offer a comprehensive recreation program, including youth and adult classes, youth and adult athletic leagues, camps, workshops, clinics, and community events such as Carrboro Day, the Freight Train Blues Concert Series, last one is Friday night, the Chapel Hill Carrboro Juneteenth Celebration, which was held this past Sunday, the July 4th Celebration is coming up in a couple of weeks, the Carrboro Music Festival, the West End Poetry Festival, the Halloween Carnival, and the Carrboro Film Festival. And whereas the town's Recreation Parks and Cultural Resources Department is committed to advancing racial equity and is evaluating its programs, facilities, and services using the racial equity assessment lens within the One Orange Racial Equity Framework. And whereas the dedicated employees of the Recreation Parks and Cultural Resources Department have an average of 18 years of service in providing excellent programs and amenities to grow our community. Now, therefore I, Barbara M. Fushii, Mayor of the Town of Carrboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim July 2024 to be Recreation and Parks Month in Carrboro. I encourage all residents to enjoy our parks and natural areas, to take advantage of classes, camps, programs, and events provided by the Recreation Parks and Cultural Resources Department, and to share appreciation and thanks with the department's many dedicated employees and volunteers. This the 18th day of June 2024. Mr. Ferguson, would you like to say a few words?
Mayor and council, again, thank you for all your support for the Recreation and Parks Division. We greatly appreciate that. As the mayor mentioned, we do have our last freight train concert this Friday night here at Town Commons at 6:30. We have our annual Fourth of July Celebration coming up on the Fourth, programming from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. that day as well. So our staff, we have a great staff who does a wonderful job to continue to strive to provide for our community, and we take a lot of pride in what we do and our customer service. So I like to thank all of our staff for all their hard work as well. So look forward to seeing everyone out at our programs and events, and thank you again.
Thank you so much. Okay. Announcement of upcoming meetings, Mr. Joyner, our Town Clerk.
Hey, good evening. Just want to announce a few meetings that we have coming up on the schedule. The Board of Adjustment meeting that was scheduled for June 19th has been moved and rescheduled for June 26th at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. There has been a rescheduling of the Affordable Housing Advisory Commission to June 26th. That was also scheduled on June 19th, but that is June 26th at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. The Transportation Advisory Board and the Safe Route to School Implementation Committee has canceled their June 20th meeting. The Racial Equity Commission has canceled their June 26th meeting. Affordable Housing Advisory Commission will have a virtual meeting on June 26th at 7:00 p.m. Carrboro Tourism Development Authority Meeting will have a meeting on July 1st at 3:00 p.m., and that meeting will be on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Joyner. Councilmembers, are there any meetings or anything that you want to announce? All right, so we're going to move to our public comment period. Mr. Joyner will put the guidelines up. I ask that those giving public comment, please take note of those guidelines. Three minutes to speak. The council may adopt other reasonable rules for public comment periods. Dress your comments to the entire council. Share your concerns and issues with the council. That's the timer. And then the last one was please refrain from comments about individuals, including council members and town staff. We thank you for following those guidelines as well as adhering to the three minutes to speak. The majority of the speakers that we have this evening are here for the summit report. I did want to say we will only be receiving that report tonight. We will be asking questions, but there will be no formal action taken about that report. We do welcome your public comment and your way in. Councilmembers, I did want to check in. I think we have 23, 24 folks signed up for public comment. And so do we want to adhere to the normal time of three minutes? Or do we want to modify the time? I would not make that decision on my own, and I'm asking.
I think we go, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Randy.
My comment would be that some folks have prepared their, what they plan to say to be the three minutes. And I would hate to put them in a position now to have to try and figure out what they're going to trim when they're standing before us and standing before neighbors and communities. So I would leave it as it is because I think that that's the expectation of the community.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think I'm comfortable with three minutes. I think that's great. I mean, just to let you all in on the discussion we're having, our town procedures manual tries to ballpark around an hour for a public comment on a single issue. And so we're about at that threshold. I think we'll go a little bit over, which I personally am pretty comfortable with. But that's just so that you all know why it is we're even talking about this.
Yeah, it's actually Rule 41 in our Town Council Procedures Manual. And so I'm happy to go with the three minutes, but please be aware that it will be exactly three minutes. And so when the timer goes off, I will. The expectation is for folks to be heading to their seat, and we will be preparing for the next person to come up. Our agenda is pretty meaty tonight. We're trying to get our town budget adopted as well as receive and discuss some other items. So this is a slight deviation from the way that we generally take public comment. The summit report is next to last on the agenda. And so I would, we would think that you would want to go ahead and get the public comment up front instead of waiting for us because literally we could be here all night. You feel me? So I think that's it, councilmembers. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, a question. Do you want to take all public comment on matters other than the public hearing and do that now?
All of that will be now. And public comment around the two public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing. And we have a text amendment and the budget. So if you're here for either one of those items, your public comment will be taken during either one of those public hearings.
Madam Mayor, what order do we want to take the topics in?
As far as?
For the comment that we're doing now.
Here, I'm going to go as folks have signed up because I think that's the fair thing to do. I'm going to go as folks have signed up. And I do realize that there are at least three or four folks who are not signed up for the summit report. But I just ask for your patience as we, as we work through the public comment period because people have signed up here. public comment period because people have signed up here. So, we're ready? We will start with Mr. Ron Conkle, Summit Report. Welcome.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to talk in front of you today. Whenever you're ready, Lamar. So my name is Ron Conkle. I've lived in Carrboro since 2001, raised a family here. It's my home. So I'm here to talk about the summit proposal, the summit engineering report. I've read it, and I am not in favor of the building on this parcel of land as it's currently defined. In my mind, it's like building a development on an 80-foot waterfall, and you'll see in just a moment why that is. This area, if you could pause that for just a moment, this area that we were just looking at is the heart of the land that is being proposed to be built upon. This is a culvert that runs into Spring Valley. This is one of three culverts that runs into Spring Valley. 100% of the rainfall that goes on this piece of property south of Pathway, 100% of it ends up in this gully. This is an incident that took place on July 13th of 2022, 2022. This is the area, this is actually the proposed area right here where you're proposing to, it's being proposed to build upon. So 18 months later, after this, on July 9th, or excuse me, January 9th of this year, an even worse incident happened. It was so bad that a Wassa actually had to file an incident report with the state of North Carolina because 1,000 gallons of raw sewage flowed into Boland Creek. That's documented. It's a state record. So as bad as the water flooding is in this video, it was even worse on that day. I did not see mention of either of these two incidents in the summit stormwater retention report. Neither of these incidents were recorded in there. This is just one of three culverts. Do you mind if we?
I have to get the time.
Thank you. This is just one of three culverts that feed into the stormwater pond in Spring Valley, which was never intended, when it was originally built in 1984, to be a stormwater retention pond. But it takes in water from Quarter Path Trace, from Waverly Forest, Spring Valley, and then again, it's going to also intake, well, that's not the video. If you can give me a little more time because of that, hopefully.
You got more time anyway, so you're good.
So since 2018, additionally, thank you, Lamar, since 2018, Spring Valley has been in conversations with the state of North Carolina over the dam, the state of the dam that's holding in that pond in Spring Valley. That pond, or the dam for the pond, is now rated as a high-risk pond in jeopardy of causing damage to downstream homes on Boland Creek. And if we do a development upstream of that, it's only going to propagate more risk to that dam. So right now, Lake Spring Valley is in conversations with structural engineers to get a bid on fixing the dam. The price is looking upwards of $300,000. By the way, I'm just representing myself. I'm not representing larger Spring Valley. This is just one person speaking here. But it's upwards of $300,000. What we need right now is for the town of Carrboro to fix the existing issue. Some of this is water off of Spring Valley, but the vast majority of water in this gully, which is four to five feet deep, is coming from Waverly Forest, and it's coming from the hillside that is intended to be, that's being looked at to be developed. Again, it's just the wrong place to be developed. So I would ask two things. Let's pause and get input from the Spring Valley neighborhood about the stormwater flooding that they are seeing. Talk to people, talk to people, talk to people. Then I'm also asking you, let's first fix what's going on right now in this culvert that's being fed by Waverly Place and by this hillside. And then if you're going to be looking at developing this, it needs to be a much reduced scope of development so that you can put a water retention pond on the hill coming down from Pathway. So you retain your own water and then release it in a controlled fashion rather than causing additional flooding issues, as you've seen here, for Spring Valley's dam. So I appreciate your consideration for this.
Thank you so much, sir. Mr. John Ross, John Ross.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not accustomed to public speaking. I don't have any background in engineering, and I'm also talking about the summit report, and I have to rely on experts for this. I do have a concern about the summit report, and I'm curious if you all have concerns also, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'd like to ask you questions. And my questions are really, the question is this, do you have any concerns about the survey report if the company that did the report, which helped to determine the initial feasibility of this project, believed that they would be rewarded any subsequent contracts to do any of the work connected to this project if the project were to move forward? I hope I'm being clear. Do you think that that would affect the conclusions of the report? And I don't, again, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but if you all could, you know, in the three minutes that I have, have any concerns about that issue?
Yeah, Mr. Ross, during public comment, we hear from community. We don't dialogue or answer any questions.
Okay. Well, then I'd just like to put that forward that I am concerned about, at least the optics of that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mark Levy, Mark Levy. Welcome, Mr. Levy.
I also am not keen on any sort of public speaking, so I'm going to read from this phone here. Good evening, town council members. My name is Mark Levy, and I'm a proud Carrboro local, husband and father of three. Let me first say that I come to this room respectfully and with positive intentions. Whew, okay. I'm here tonight because I, along with many other of my neighbors, have serious concerns about the summit report and the process behind the proposed building project on the Pathway Drive parcel. For full transparency, I live in a home that borders on the proposed development area. I want to be clear, I am all for quality affordable housing. We need more of it here, and I fully support efforts to increase our housing options. However, we must ensure that any potential development is feasible, sustainable, and truly beneficial for our community. The Pathway parcel is a beautiful section of forest with a wide range of wildlife and flora. It's a gem to many of us in our neighborhood, to put it lightly. As I understand it, this report, the summit engineering report, points out some major hurdles to building on this site. The land is steep, and there's a lot of rock and bedrock that would need to be dealt with. This means potentially costly and harmful techniques like blasting might be required. Plus, there are so many other unknowns about the true costs and feasibility of making this land suitable for building. It's concerning that we might clearcut this forest, which is something that is specified in this report that might be required to further find out what may or may not be feasible, to find out that affordable housing could not actually be built here. Stormwater management is another big issue, as you just saw from the previous presentation. I won't get too much into that, but supposedly the stormwater runoff could double per this report in their estimates. This is a critical point that was just made as well. I personally see this as a potential conflict of interest if there was the idea that this would be a contract that were, to be awarded to the builder and also the entity conducting the survey. That, to me, is just like, that doesn't make sense to me at all. They would clearly benefit greatly from moving the project forward, and I think this could bias or influence their recommendations. So really, what I'm here, I have a lot more, so I'm just going to cut to the chase. What I think we need, what I would propose, is an independent and impartial environmental assessment to get a fair evaluation of whether this land is truly suitable for development. If it is, great. And if it's not, then it's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Next up, Ms. Margaret Weiner, Margaret Weiner.
I'm going to keep my mask on. I don't really have a lot to say this evening, but I, too, would like to express concern about the report that Summit Engineering issued on Friday concerning the Pathway parcel. I live in Spring Valley. I've lived there since 1999. I've lived in Carrboro since 1994. When I purchased my less than 1,500-square-foot house, it was affordable. It is increasingly unaffordable. Given the length of that report, it's clear that nobody will have had sufficient time to fully evaluate it, but from the little that I have had time to read, I'm concerned about both the economic and environmental costs of what Summit proposes. In particular, I'm concerned that Summit's proposal involves clearcutting, scraping, blasting. The clearcutting involves acres of mature trees of multiple species. They're at least 90 years old, maybe older. The town of Carrboro website claims that Carrboro's green infrastructure includes forested areas and addresses many of the benefits of such areas in detail, so I don't want to go into that here. I noticed on that website also that Carrboro's alliance with Tree City, but Tree City is involved with planting trees in cities for all of those benefits. We already have them. I want to add to what my neighbors have said, the already existing stormwater problems downhill from the Pathway parcels, which have been worsening with climate change, with serious impacts on homes and the Spring Valley pond. And with climate change, those are only going to get much, much worse. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Weiner. Mr. John McGowan, Mr. John McGowan.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. I am also here to talk about the summit report, and I'm asking or recommending that you look hard before you leap in terms of adopting the suggestions in the report. I think that the report does a very good job of identifying the many challenges there are to building on that site. And I think, among other things, before the town makes any firm decision, there should be a full costing out of what it would take to build on that site because I have severe doubts that it would actually end up being affordable. It's simply the cost of putting something there would render whatever we ended up with not affordable within our own criteria. There are also, of course, the stormwater issues, which everyone has been mentioning. I will only add a couple of things to that. One is that the report does not talk specifically about any storm control, water control mechanisms for the site. It just lists six stormwater control mechanisms that can be used in various places, but it doesn't say how they would be used or which ones would be most effective or most usable on this site. And once again, there's no attention to the cost, either the cost of putting in such mechanisms or the cost of maintenance as you go forward. So the report doesn't specify enough. So I think at the very, very least, Carrboro's own storm management, water management team needs to go out and assess the site. And then I think, as previous speakers have said, further assessment in terms of costing out things would also be required before making a firm decision. The final thing I'd like to say is I want to thank the mayor and the council members who have come out and taken a tour of the property and a tour of the neighborhood in order to get a better sense of what the stormwater issues are and also the characteristics of the site that make it not, you know, obviously feasible for a place to do a big building project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGowan. Ms. Susan Stone, Ms. Susan Stone, welcome.
You can go to the next slide, please. My name is Susan Stone. I live in Spring Valley, and I've been a Carrboro resident since 1984, and it's been a great place to live and still is. Thank you for having my comments. And so, yeah, next slide. The interesting fact is, this land was required by the town to be donated, and the neighborhoods of Webbwood, Spring Valley, and Fair Oaks made their land contiguous so that there was a larger green space for the public to use. And the public uses it a lot. Kids, people walking, its benefits are immense for recreation and green space, and one of the Carrboro goals is to have an equal amount of green space and commercial space. Well, this helps meet that goal. We have tree canopy goals that we would like to meet to continue to be a tree city. It helps with that, the shade, and it helps with climate goals, carbon sequestration. Now, I haven't had a chance to look at the report much, but certainly it appears that the costs of developing this are just going to be astronomical with all the stormwater maintenance that's going to have, all the stormwater controls that will have to be put in. And also, there's the environmental destruction. You're losing this huge benefit that we have. And then some of these, these stormwater control measures, such as underground storage, require a lot of money to upkeep. So we're not only looking at a huge outlay now, but an ongoing large outlay. And so I, my, the title of this slide says it all. I really hope that you will take time to weigh all of the options. And one of the best options might be buying some flat land. It might be cheaper. It might cost less. It may provide more and better affordable housing. Nobody wants stormwater in their homes, and it will help maintain the beneficial green space that we already have. So I thank you. I was very glad to hear that you're not going to make any decisions tonight.
No, ma'am.
And I hope that you will take a lot of time to really think this through. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Next up, we have Ms. Jane Danielwitz, Jane Danielwitz. And Carrie White, Mr. Carrie White will be after Ms. Danielwitz.
Good evening. My name is Jane Danielwitz. I live at 110 Waverly Forest Lane. Thank you, counsel, for making the report public. This 1,200-plus-page report makes all the obstacles to building on this land abundantly clear. The recommendations, beginning with clearcutting and scraping off topsoil layers and ending with stormwater controls, such as underwater retention containers and porous pavement, are all expensive to begin with and need costly maintenance and upkeep. The report indicates evidence of two species of endangered bats on the property, hundreds of rare and specimen trees, which are protected under Carrboro's land use ordinance, four ephemeral streams, one which bisects the main section of the parcel. The engineers used historical precipitation records based on 25-year storm criteria instead of the widely adopted 100-year storm event. These 100-year storm events are occurring 10 to 15 years apart in many places. Just look at what's going on in Florida. Sewers are not even considered in the scope of this report. Before the town takes any action, we need a realistic appraisal of the building costs of the Pathway parcels to evaluate whether anything affordable could possibly be built, whatever criteria we use for affordability. No developer, we know, would build at a loss. Furthermore, the forest is storing carbon, providing shade and habitat, and helping with the town's climate action priorities. Due to the personal tours of the parcels, thank you all for coming out. It was a great pleasure to meet you and to speak with you one-on-one and to show you where we live. You're all well aware of the problems of the stormwater and the positioning of the properties. You also know that I'm strongly in favor of and support with my taxes, affordable housing. However, developing the land does not appear feasible, given its natural characteristics and functions. I would like to suggest we move on to new strategies for building affordable housing. I would like to suggest we move on to new strategies for building affordable housing. I am prepared to join the town in any effort, in this effort, in any way you can, you can come up with. Whatever you'd like me to do, I'd be happy to participate. Many people cannot attend this meeting. I have brought with me written public comments by 10 others that I gave to the clerk and I asked to be entered into the public record. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Carrie White. That's okay. Take your time.
My presentation is a video, a collection of videos, and really just pulls out of the report the buildable area. And I'm sure all of you have seen this, but unless you zero in on it, it may not be clear. Can you stop the video for a second? Pause it?
Go ahead.
Oh, I can, I can pause it.
I got you.
Okay. What the video shows, and this is the chart from the page 78 of a stormwater report, it shows building up to the edge of Pathway Drive on the Webbwood side, on the southern side, building to the edge of the forest, clear cutting on the Fair Oaks side, clear cutting almost down to the Waverly side, and then over to the Rock Spring court side of Spring Valley. And then on down, you can, you can start it now, or I can start it, I guess. You got it, okay. So here we are, the Webbwood portion. Pathway Drive, we're coming down on the western side to Fair Oaks, the edge of the forest, almost the edge of the forest on the Waverly side, coming up on Rock Spring. Full disclosure, I live there. There's a sewer easement right in the middle where the space is. And we're going down, and the area below this is reserved for stormwater retention. But an expert explained to me that this will not probably be left forested, that it'll have to be dry pond, retention pond, still to be determined, because it was not in the report. And now we're coming back out with a wider view. The next video is just an aerial view of the area that would be clear cut, potentially clear cut. So we're talking the Spring Valley area, Fair Oaks left, Waverly to the north, and then the, the stormwater area kind of goes right where that stormwater video. And this is either the same video or very similar video of a storm event coming down off the parcel and then coming down to Waterside Drive in Spring Valley. And as others have said, and that is the end. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming out for your tours. That was great.
Thank you, Mr. White. I have Ms. Clara Zalaski. Clara Zalaski, welcome.
Hi, I'm Clara, and I've been in Fair Oaks since 2004. I don't know if you can see from there. I've got some pages of trees on the parcel, if you want to pass it around. And so this is the city of trees, and I'm going to talk about the trees. From looking at the schematic, I just roughly counted. It's not accurate, but my count was there's over 300 trees. And per the Summit report, it states that the area has been wooded since 1938 or even farther back, but that's how far they went back in the documents. And I calculated that there are more than 100 oak trees. And I used this, I wanted to know how old are these trees? This just shows the diameter. And so there's a tree age calculator app that you can get, and it takes into consideration the diameter of the tree and a growth factor. And of course, it's an approximation. It doesn't take into consideration the soil and the sunlight and the water conditions. But if you take the largest tree, 42 inches of oak, and you put it in that calculator, it says it's 210 years old. So that's pretty old. And if you take a 35-inch diameter oak, it's 175 years old. And some of the smaller oaks, 25 inches in diameter, it's 125 years old. There's also approximately six hickory trees, 28 inches in diameter, and that calculates out to 210 years old each. And a 14-inch diameter hickory, which is probably, I'm guessing, about this big, is 105 years old. There's also two beech trees, 18 inches in diameter, approximately 108 years old, and numerous poplar, popular and gum trees, which I didn't count because there's too many to count. And there's only about four or five pine trees. So these are hardwood trees, and they're very old. And so I just would like to, you know, have everyone just kind of think about how old these trees are, and if we're going to cut them down, how that, how that would be very destructive and just very sad to be cutting down such very old trees in this forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalaski. Mr. Andrew Montgomery. After Mr. Montgomery, I have Diane Robertson.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. There's not a lot that I can really add that I haven't seen and haven't heard. I'm just really shocked that anybody would think about building on this land personally. I've been in Spring Valley 30 years, and we already have water issues. And that, what you saw, that's not the first time I've seen that water like that in 30 years. I've seen it several times. And the expense, I just, it just doesn't compute in my mind how much money you'd have to spend to build on that land. It just shocks me that, you know. I'm all for affordable housing, but the expense of this is just, it would be outrageous. I just don't see it, you know? And I thank you for my neighbors coming and speaking also. I appreciate that. I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Ms. Diane Robertson. After Ms. Robertson, William Dempsey. William Dempsey.
Well, everybody has said almost everything, but repetition is valuable. I appreciated the meet, I'm Diane Robertson. I live at 405 Waterside Drive in Spring Valley, and I've lived here since 1991. I appreciated meeting with most of you on this matter when you toured Spring Valley, which will be directly impacted by this project. Spring Valley has a retention pond slash dam that were created in the late 1980s when the subdivision was developed to manage the stormwater for 100 homes. Since then, the pond has been undermined and overwhelmed by the increased upstream development, starting in Hillsborough. The problem with the dam is for another meeting. The destruction of the forest to build housing will not provide a meaningful solution to the affordable housing deficit, but it will exacerbate the stormwater damage, which results from the increase of impervious surface and the decrease of permeable land. Our stormwater issues in Carboro increase with each road, driveway, and rooftop built. And though we are taxed for impervious surfaces, this will not create the necessary resources to address the loss of permeable land or the impact to property by water damage after these construction projects are completed. Stormwater remediation will become a budget buster, and this project will surely add to that cost. Carboro has a stated goal to address the climate crisis. It is hard to understand how the removal of the natural tree canopy, which you just heard about, which absorbs CO2 and is a bulwark to mitigate temperatures, is prudent. The health and energy cost of increased temperatures is well documented and is part of our daily lives as we speak. The plants are just wilting outside from the heat and the drought that we're experiencing. Extreme weather is now a term that rolls off the tongue, and this area is not exempt. Flooding has become a regular occurrence, except when we are in, except when we are in a heat storm, as we are now. It seems this project provides limited solutions at a very high cost. It will be a short-term political choice, but not good policy. I expect our elected leaders to make decisions that will be the most benefit for the well-being of the most people in the community for now and in the future. Thank you for your time, and thanks for coming out to Spring Valley.
Thanks, Ms. Robertson. William Dempsey, also known as Terry Buckner. Hello.
Gillian.
Who is it?
Gillian.
Gillian, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Gillian Dempsey and Terry Buckner.
I'm sorry, she was not able to make it and ask me to read her statement.
That's fine.
Most of her statement has already been said, so if you don't mind, I'm just going to, it's going to be disjointed, but I'm going to hit a few pertinent points, I think.
Get it from the microphone right there.
First, I want to make sure, oh, first, I want to make sure that she says, "Thank you, Town Council, for providing the engineering report to the public in a timely fashion and for your individual efforts to visit the pathway parcel over the recent months." So she read the report, and she made comments on two sections, the stormwater and the geotechnical. And as, you know, she, she goes on, and she's concerned about the flooding in Spring Valley, as other people have said. But one of the points that she makes is that the stormwater section of the report is cursory. The report does not provide clear comparisons of pre- and post-development calculations. As such, I'm deeply concerned that the report fails to quantify impact of this development on existing homeowners. I would have assumed personally that an engineering report would provide that pre- and post-kind of standard, but I don't know where in the development parts that comes from, but it is an important part for you to follow up with, I hope. The other thing that I've heard once is about the 25-year storm level. I know Chapel Hill, Orange County, and other surrounding communities are using 100-year storms these days, and I don't know where we are on the ordinance, the land use ordinance being revised, but I would hope that we could wait until that revision is made so that new development like this comes under the 100-year storm, not the 25 in the future. And then sites, and for the geotechnical, the report states, "Site preparation should begin with the clearing of all vegetation and the stripping of all topsoil and rootmat from areas designed for construction and roadways." The report states that only after the clear cutting will it be possible to conduct a more thorough survey. In fact, at almost every stage of excavation, grading, foundation placement, and more, Summit recommends additional evaluation. This report suggests that only after committing to the development of this challenging land and the pillaging of the mature hardwood forest and dynamiting of the bedrock will the full scope and cost of the requisite geoengineering required for the site preparation be revealed. So we hope that you will make sure that that does not happen, and there's more detail before any blasting or anything goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Ms. Susan Beck. Susan Beck. And after her, Bridget, Bridget Pemberton Smith.
Thank you, Susan Beck. I live on Waverly Forest Lane. I've lived in Carboro for 40 years, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Also want to thank the council, the mayor, the staff for your service to this, to our town, and especially at this meeting. I've looked at your agenda, and I think you're heroic for having that agenda. I will not be here for all of that. So people have said a lot of things, and I echo what they've said. And I was pleased that the mayor announced you're not going to take action, you're just going to receive this report, and I appreciate that. When I, I've just did a brief read of the report, and I'm not an engineer, but it sounds like it's possible to build on that land if you overcome a myriad of issues and obstacles. And I think it's going to take a great deal of time to assess the feasibility and the affordability of doing that. So I would just ask the council to consider the input of the community, the concerns of the committee, community, as we look at all that and look at those obstacles. And so just keep us, keep our concerns and keep our thoughts in your mind as you're doing all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Next up, Ms. Bridget Pemberton Smith. Outside agencies funding is her public comment. Welcome. And some friends with her. Multiple friends. Y'all going to divide that three minutes? What we doing?
Oh, no, I'm going to do most of it. They'll jump in if I forget something.
Oh, you got some moral support, some backing.
Yeah, definitely.
I think I like that. Go for it.
So my name is Bridget Pemberton Smith. I'm a lifelong Orange County resident. I live in Chapel Hill, but I'm proud to say I work and play in Carboro. I am here with the Probono Counseling Network, and I am a new board member there, and I am here with some of my other board members. I've got Deborah Barrett, Minion Hopper, and Miriam Lieberman. And so we just received notice that you guys, your staff, is recommending that we receive funding from the Human Services Funding Outside Agencies application, and we're mostly here to say thank you. We have been around since 2007 around, and, but before, for a long time, we just worked with fiscal agents. So we just recently became our own 501(c)(3), and so we were able to apply for this funding, and we're really excited. Just to let you know a little bit about what the Probono Counseling Network is, we are a group of diverse mental health clinicians. We are, you know, throughout the Triangle area, we serve diverse populations, we can work with people who speak different languages, and all different types of things that they are dealing with. And so the network that we have put together is a group of therapists, and we ask them to donate eight sessions a year of free counseling to people who either are underinsured or have no health insurance at all. So I'm guessing that most of you guys have insurance, but even with insurance now, post-pandemic, it is really hard to find a mental health clinician. So this service is really needed, and we're so happy to have some funding to help us really, you know, uplift our services, get, make them available to people. And we realize that you all, you know, when you're making decisions to allot money through the outside agencies grant, that you have a limited amount of money to allot, and we really appreciate you guys taking a risk on what's a new-to-you nonprofit, and our goal is to make you guys proud and excited that you gave us the funding, and you're like, yes, that was a winner. So thank you for letting us share all that with you. Did I forget anything?
Yes, we wanted to also say that we are trying to, the board is a very dedicated working board, and so we're doing everything. We're answering the phones, we're providing the counseling, we're connecting folks with counselors, we're trying to honor their requests, to have counselors who represent the intersections of their lives. And so we really want to, to continue to help folks understand the significance around that, as suicide rates continue to grow, as younger and younger children are coming forth with mental health issues. And so we really want to be able to be a really, a real force for good in the community. And we do have bilingual therapists like myself, and just wanted to say thank you and to keep us in mind and to refer folks to us. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mental health matters. Thank you. Next up, we have Allison Cody. That's okay. Down with the paper.
I'm Allison Cody, and I live at 103 Aberdeen Court, and I am a two-year resident of Carboro, and I love it. My neighbors have presented their concerns about this report in a much more articulate and detailed way than I can, and they've touched on many of the things that I had, was going to speak about. But this report has concluded that development of this parcel is definitely possible, but is it wise? And I'd like to consider, I'd like you to consider that any benefit to Carboro regarding additional affordable housing and density is offset by the project's inherent complexity and cost and the initial and and cost, and the initial and continual, continuing environmental impact on Carrboro as a whole. Carrboro's ability to face current and changing climate is dependent on its tree canopy and the land's ability to absorb stormwater. And I can understand that we want all housing to be more affordable, and we need affordable housing here in this community, but what's the point of affordable housing if the city is unlivable? If this parcel remains under consideration for development, I strongly, I really appreciate that you guys aren't going to act on it anytime soon, and I would, as a Carrboro resident and taxpayer, consider, consider whether any further investment in investigation of this property, when it's so evident that it's going to be such a challenge, is in the best interest of Carrboro taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cody. Kendall Wimberly. Kendall Wimberly, welcome. Pesticide local policy.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Council. I'm Kendall Wimberly. I'm a Durham resident, but today I'm here in my professional capacity as the policy advocate with Toxic Free NC. Our mission is to advance environmental health and justice by advocating for safe alternatives to harmful pesticides and chemicals. I'm here today to talk about a topic Carrboro has been a leader on for a long time, supporting pollinators and public health through implementing alternatives to harmful pesticides. It is also timely to be here during this week, which is National Pollinator Week. Carrboro, for anyone who may not be aware, has had a least toxic integrated pest management policy in place since March of 1999. Integrated Pest Management Policies, or IPM policies, help to give preference to the safest, more biological methods and treat issues from a systematic approach, rather than automatically utilizing harsh chemical methods to address pest control as a Band-Aid. I want to take this opportunity to thank current and past Carrboro town leadership for their interest and care about protective pesticide alternatives, alternatives that protect our essential pollinators, biodiversity, food, and our health. At Toxic Free NC, we hear from Carrboro residents who care deeply about these issues all the time. You may have seen these spray-free zone signs around your neighborhood or around the Triangle, and we love seeing people take on health protective choices in their yards. I brought a couple with me. You can also sign up to get one on our website at toxicfreenc.org. I'm also here today to share some concerning news regarding pesticide legislation. Local pesticide restrictions are currently under attack. Representatives in Congress are trying to put language into the farm bill and other federal bills that would preempt or remove the ability to have state-level or local-level pesticide restrictions. Federal legislation should be the floor of protection, not the ceiling, allowing states and local municipalities to build upon that, as Carrboro did back in 1999. We need to protect community rights to restrict pesticides. I wanted to take the opportunity during Pollinator Week to bring this threatening policy to your attention and give an open invitation for further discussion if anyone would be interested. Carrboro has been a leader in this space for a long time, and I thank you for the work you continue to do today for people's health and the environment in North Carolina. I brought some materials I hope to leave with you and some to put on the record. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wimberly.
Should I just leave a pile? Okay.
Marilyn Pinssmit, come on up. Elizabeth Young is up next.
Either one? Thanks for having this meeting. It's very, it's very good of you to let us all tell, tell you about our concerns about our neighborhood. I don't live near the new development, proposed new development. I live at 202 Spring Valley Road, which is actually Webbwood. And I just want to say, I have just some brief comments, because everybody who spoke on this, the summit thing, really was eloquent, and I learned a lot from them as well. But I did, I want you to know that I think it's important for the town to develop creative and workable strategies to increase the supply of affordable housing. I'm familiar with the main points of the summit report, but find it incomplete. It does not include how the sewers would be managed, how stormwater would be handled specifically in areas prone to flooding. It's not specific about rock, which may be under trees, until they clearcut and remove topsoil first, and this area is full of giant rocks, I mean, really giant rocks. No costs are mentioned. Summit would like to do this work, then what? Go ahead at increased cost or leave a denoted landscape? This expensive, complicated project doesn't seem to consider those it intends to serve, as they would have to have their own transportation to get into Carrboro. It's not easy to get into Carrboro from this greater neighborhood. You do have to have a car. The bus is there, it's infrequent, and it takes a while to get there, and if it's raining or freezing cold or icy or something, it's almost impossible. And biking up those hills is really for the, only the sturdy and young, I can tell you that. But this is what I think. Why not use the money that you're going to spend on this project to buy a more suitable or buildable property closer in? Something where, you know, it's, it won't cost as much. I'm sure some properties will come up. You know, we have lots of apartment complexes, maybe they'll be sold or something, can use those. Why not use the money to buy them? In hindsight, I just have one little thing that someone mentioned, in hindsight, the new library property on South Greensboro Street would have been a great place for this affordable housing. It would have been perfect for it. Anyway, thank you so much, and thank you for considering all of our opinions.
Thank you so much. Elizabeth Young. Ms. Elizabeth Young. Heidi Perry is next.
Thank you, Mayor Fushy and Council. I'd also like to say, I really appreciate the communication, that when I reach out to y'all on email, I enjoy that and really appreciate it. My subject tonight is Orange County Longtime Homeowner Assistance Program, LHA. My request is to ask the town of Carrboro to provide some property tax bill assistance to help Carrboro citizens stay in their own home. This will help offset the increase of property tax burden for low-wealth citizens. If you cannot fund the assistance by this budget deadline, then possibly fund it, please with a budget amendment or budget expansion later this year. The Orange County's LHA program was initiated and suggested to the county by Justice United and the Marion Cheek Jackson Center in 2021. This program provides tax relief only for the county portion and spends $250,000 for qualifying applicants. Eighty-four percent of requests were met in 2022. I have heard and learned at Rogers Road that their community is very concerned about property tax increases. I volunteer there with others and Reverend Campbell, and volunteers have held four tax relief workshops for the community this last year, inviting the tax office for education and for filling out applications for both North Carolina state tax programs and then for the LHA. The Rogers Road is a nonprofit organization committed to ending racial, cultural, and environmental injustice through community involvement, political action, and education. Their dedication and purpose is to preserve their community. My viewpoint is, yes, I do understand that the town council is hoping to adopt the budget as it is tonight, but I am very concerned for Rogers Road community. All the houses on the Carrboro side, which there's a lot of Carrboro out there, all the houses on the Carrboro side of Rogers Road, going down homesteads toward U-Banks, are severely impacted by local severe gentrification from a $2.2 million property, while most of the Rogers Road community houses are worth $55,000 to $75,000. I noted when I was assisting, assisting families with applications, that this particular property valued at $2.2 million in February 2024 had indeed been valued at $1.2 million in November, four months before. So this is not sustainable for the neighborhood. On the Rogers Road, on the proper Rogers Road, all the home properties have values increased by 66%. So my request is that, please, Orange County is helping people to stay in their homes by easing the tax burden. Chapel Hill is funding a matching grant for their town. Please, my request is just to ask the town of Carrboro to provide some assistance when a homeowner qualifies for the county LHA, then hopefully you will provide some matching funding. If not funded now, then, and maybe in a future amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Heidi Perry. Welcome.
Before I start, can I just say a thank you for putting the new bike-on-bus demo at the front of Town Hall? It is so awesome.
Yes.
I just love it. So thank you for getting that done. My name is Heidi Parif Perry. You probably all know that I serve on the Board of Bike Walk NC, which is the statewide nonprofit for people who walk and bike, who travel outside of cars, also known as vulnerable road users. You've also probably heard me say that this year, the state, annual state transportation summit that we put on is going to be held in Chapel Hill. It was held in Carrboro in 2013 and was awesome, and I'm really happy that it's being brought back near here for this year. I am just here to let you know, we have some amazing speakers lined up. We have John Bowders, former mayor of Emeryville, California, who ushered in major bike and pedestrian improvements in his town, earning him the nickname America's bicycling mayor. We also have speakers from Hoboken, New Jersey, a city that has recorded zero road fatalities for the last seven-plus years, as well as from Jersey City, which has also made great strides toward Vision Zero. And we have just added Anna Zivarts, who is an author, visually impaired mom, who recently wrote a book titled, "When Driving Is Not An Option," that examines mobility barriers for those who don't drive and how to remove those barriers. All of these speakers, along with some other excellent sessions, touch on topics that Carrboro has named as their goals. Just last meeting you had, I heard one of our non-driving residents come to you with his frustration about inadequate transportation choices that kept him from being able to find a job. I'm here tonight for two reasons. First is to encourage you all and all the town members who want to attend this meeting. To do so, you can get the information at bikewalknc.org. It is a choose-your-price registration fee, so no one will be unable to attend due to cost restraints. Of course, I'm also here, of course, to ask also that you consider being a sponsor of the summit, show your support for the work we're doing. I know that it's, the timing is weird. I've been out of town a lot, so this is the last moment I got here, but possibly you have some money in your transportation budget left over from last fiscal, this fiscal year that you could put toward it, and even 500 would show that you were supporting it and get your name and your logo on the program. Regardless, I really hope you'll all be there. It's going to be an amazing, amazing summit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Assistant Town Manager Parker, you heard the requests from Ms. Young and Ms. Perry. Thank you. William Goldstein. William Goldstein. Wait, Mr. Goldstein is the last person I have signed up for public comment tonight.
There, excuse me, mayor.
Are there a couple more?
Yeah, there were a couple more that didn't get to sign up but want to speak as well.
And where are these? I see one hand.
I don't know if they're still here. Okay. Yeah, we have.
Mr. Goldstein, go ahead.
Hello, my name is William Goldstein, and I live on Waverly Forest Lane, just below the plan development on Pathway Drive. While I am supportive of affordable housing efforts, I think this development plan is shortsighted due to its location. The slope is very steep and currently experience significant drainage and flooding issues below this property. In 2021, for example, my HOA spent over $15,000 for my property alone to help correct drainage issues related to this slope property. I believe that in combination with significant tree removal and the addition of impervious services, the current drainage issues we neighborhoods below us face will be exacerbated. One other thing I want to point out is that the significant increase in traffic by adding, like, 50 to 60 cars to Pathway Drive, which is already quite busy. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. I see Mr. Crook, and I also see, what's your name?
Laura Kates.
You want Ms. Kates to come up, and then Mr. Crook.
Thanks, thanks for having this meeting, and thanks for making sure I got on the list. Anyway, so most people have talked about the points I was, I'm talking about the summit. It's sponsored by Laura Kates. I live at 203 Waterside Drive, so that's in Spring Valley. And most of the concerns I was going to talk about, other people have said, with the slope and the fact that there are things in the report, I tried to read the best I could. I'm so happy that you're not going to be voting on it tonight, because I think it's a lot of information to process, so to look at it in more detail. And I guess there's one other thing that when people were looking at, I mean, I'm completely in support of affordable housing, and I'm here speaking for myself, but just, you know, my background, so I'm a physical therapist, I work with children, I know lots of people that use wheelchairs. And when I think of affordable housing, I also think of accessible housing, which is really important to let that population of underserved people have homes, have options for homes, where they can get to the bus line quickly, then they can get to, the hills are hard, so it's just one more layer of people that are not always represented. And it would be, it's very steep, it would be very steep for that population, so ultimately it would make affordable housing, it might not make accessible housing. So I just think that should be looked into as you look into all the other details.
Thank you, Ms. Kates. Appreciate it. Mr. Crook, come on up.
My name's Rob Crook. I'm here to speak about the affordable housing proposals for Pathway Drive. I'm going to be blissfully brief. One of the things, I am not an affordable housing expert. I mean, I don't know if I've dealt with it over the years. It's an extremely complicated issue, and it's a difficult issue to really match affordable housing with market forces. One of the things I would like to say, what I've seen over the years, includes Chapel Hill, that had proposed affordable housing to be put on top of coal ash, is that this is something that I do see with affordable housing, is that it's often located in places which are not safe for the people that the affordable housing is intended to serve. And this site at Pathway is another example of just that. It's a very steep slope. It's, it's not a great place for people to live, to be honest. I mean, to put in that much of a development on that kind of a slope is going to be extremely challenging. That being said, you know, let's do affordable housing where it's going to be nice and where we can actually build up equity in people's, you know, personal income, and that they can actually break intergenerational poverty and actually move forward with their lives. Another thing that I haven't seen brought up tonight was a biodiversity issue. Biodiversity and climate change are extremely linked, okay? And if you do not address biodiversity, you're not addressing climate change. By removing all the trees, by removing all the habitat that you have left within this town, and it's not much, since we are already one of the most densely developed towns in the state, you are actually impacting on climate change quite seriously. You know, the other thing is about this site, it's Project Management 101, is, there's going to be a lot of external, there's going to be a lot of things that are going to pop up as this site work moves forward that's going to impact the bottom line on the cost of construction. One of these is probably the fact that there's a reason why that neighborhood's called Spring Valley, okay? It's got springs in it. And if you wanted to do another tour of that area, of that neighborhood, when we're not in the middle of a drought, I would be happy to show you the springs which are already popping up on Spring Valley Road as you go down the hill into the neighborhood. There's tons and tons of springs in that slope, and once you start popping into those things... And that's going to drive up your price per square foot in a lot of these houses. So yeah, it's really biodiversity, construction, and also let's put affordable housing where it's meant to be.
Thank you, Ms. Crook. This ends our public comment period as we get ready to move into our agenda. I did want to just briefly say before everyone gets up and leaves, but you're going to leave, but if you want to leave, go ahead. So community input is vital to us. We do appreciate all the emails. We're taking into account all the information, the concerns that we're hearing from community members, and we will continue to do that as this discussion continues. And I just wanted you to know that I've heard quite a few things tonight. Summit conflict, cost analysis, buildable areas, tree canopy, stormwater control, having community input, the rock underneath, sewer management, accessible housing, topography, biodiversity, climate change. And so we just want you to know that you are heard and that your voices are valued. And we thank you for your patience tonight as we work through the public comment. And I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, according to our abstract, the next steps will be some type of staff review or further staff review, is my understanding. So, thank you. Let them move out. You guys want to break? Be ready to roll. Okay. Need to get water or anything? Yeah, good. No, we're going to hop right into the consent agenda.
Over there.
As community members continue to walk out, we're going to head into our consent agenda. Consent agenda is part of our normal town business, and it's submitted in accordance with established procedure. There will be no discussion of the items. We have 14 tonight unless a council member asserts a request. That item will then be removed and considered individually. I will be pulling myself item one, 24-135, which are some minutes from Councilmember Posada to second. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. And so the item I'm pulling is the approval of minutes from town council meetings held on October 3rd, 10th, 24th, and November 14th, and 29th of 2023. There are council members that can vote on these minutes. And all in favor of approving this set of minutes, please say aye. There are four of us.
Hang on one second.
Uh huh, yes, I will. Waiting for Councilmember Haven O'Donnell.
Yeah, no, I wanted to pull the 14th and the 29th, because I need, I need time to re-review it, if that's okay.
There is a request from Councilmember Haven O'Donnell to pull November 14th and 29th, 2023 minutes for review. And so I will revise that motion for October 3rd, October 10th, October 24th of 2023. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We also have December 5th, 2023 minutes where everyone can vote on the minutes. Councilmembers Marilyn Frey were sworn in that night, and so all in favor of approving that set of minutes for December 5th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Did you have a question? Oh, okay. And so the minutes from November 14th and 29th, I am assuming those minutes will roll into the September, roll into the first regular business meeting in September, Mr. Joyner. Done with the consent agenda. Assistant Town Manager Parker, we are on our first public hearing item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. The first item is a public hearing, the first of two, which is a legislative public hearing on revised land use ordinance text amendments relating to neighborhood cafes and residential density. The town has received a request for text amendments to the land use ordinance to add a new restaurant use for neighborhood cafes and to allow additional residential density in certain zoning districts. The council must receive public comment before making a decision. We have Tina Moon, our planning administrator, here to give a short presentation, and will be available for any questions.
Thank you so much. And while Tina is coming, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we will hear from Tina Moon, town staff.
Am I exactly where to stand? Thank you for the introduction. I'm Tina Moon with the Planning Department. And we'll jump right into this with a quick review of the legislative public hearing process again. This text amendment is what we consider a legislative decision. So you've already opened to the public hearing. I have a short staff report. The applicant and her agent are here. I don't think they're anticipating making a presentation, but they are available for questions or other comments, as may be appropriate. There'll be an opportunity for public comment. As the legislative public hearing, there's no need for swearing in. Anyone can make comments after you've completed your deliberation, if you are ready to take action. We'll go through the resolution for consistency and talk through the consideration of the draft ordinance. So apologize for having a lot of text on the slide, but this is an effort at a glance to kind of give you the whole history of this text amendment to this current point. So as many of you may recall, there was a mixed-use live-work project that was identified for this site, 603 Jones Ferry Road, in 2018 that was approved. The project has not moved forward, and the applicant, Heather Washburn, with Calico Studios, came to the town with a suggestion to modify the proposal to allow additional residential uses, I beg your pardon, to include, to make the project more dense, so more units, smaller sized units, and to add a cafe. As we discussed different options for that to move forward, we realized that a text amendment was needed. A text amendment was submitted. It included two main components, one to increase the residential density for the office district, that is the zoning district of the subject property, as well as to create a new land use, which we've named neighborhood cafes. This went to the joint review meeting and came to public hearing in April. As part of your review, you recommended or directed staff to make some changes, and we're now going through the process of the public hearing for the revised draft ordinance. And all the recommended changes are in the bullets below. Okay, this is kind of an at-a-glance, this is how you can see the draft ordinance as it was presented in April, with the changes shown and tracking. So the main, just to hit the highlights of this, and then it'll all be available for questions if you have them. So the new use, the new neighborhood cafe would be available in 10 zoning districts. There was some discussion at the public hearing as to whether you wanted to really focus on what was needed for this particular application versus make this a more broad amendment. So we've offered an option, a Section 2 alternate for you to consider, which would only allow the cafe in the two zoning districts that we're considering related to this project. The other requested change was to modify the square footage related to the permit requirement. I have a table where you can really see that at a glance. And then to remove the parking standards for the cafes for vehicles, to keep the ones for bicycles in place. As a note, since we always talk about the flexibility in administering our parking standards, which are still available for commercial uses, while that would not be applicable, there is still some flexibility for bicycles. And then finally, the request was to increase the potential density from 3,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet of land area per dwelling unit. So this would be increasing the density potential by not quite four, four times, but about three and a half times. And then finally, staff had identified two criteria to allow that residential density increase, and that was stripped down to just the one, to require affordable housing. And of note, and I'll show you a map in just a minute, the existing office and office assembly districts are all located on Arterio, so should you, should you receive a request to rezone other property to those districts, this may come up, but at this point, it's not, it's not necessarily an issue. So, and again, here's this table. I think you can look at it as a glance, but it just gives you a sense of the change. And this was in interest of being more consistent with other restaurant-type uses in the ordinance. And then finally, this map is just a quick, at-a-glance opportunity for you to see where the office and office assembly districts are located. The office assembly is in the hatched, and the office is in the white color. The subject property, which is not the discussion here, but just as a point of reference, like here we are, is here on Jones Ferry Road. So, and this is the kind of the Willow Creek Office Center, just to give you a sense of where you are.
And that was the applicant?
That is the applicant's proposal that, yeah. Okay, so in terms of consistency with adopted plans and policies, something to review for a legislative decision. We've talked through these before, and I believe all of these are still relevant. These are the ones that we identified and discussed for the April public hearing. Just a couple things to consider under the economic sustainability goal. The removal of the mixed-use component does perhaps shift a little bit the benefits for economic development, but certainly the ability to have the cafe use, to have some type of a business without a commercial kitchen, I think is really a way to get your foot in the door for a lot of, a lot of business folks. And so there's some real opportunities to be had there. And then finally, your procedural notes. Comments from the advisory boards are included. The TV didn't have a quorum, which is not typical, but was the case for this particular meeting. And some of the other commissions couldn't quite come to consensus and chose not to provide comments. And so with that, I will pause, and then when you feel that you're ready to move, to make a decision, if you are tonight, I'll come back and we'll walk through that consistency and draft ordinance together.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tina. Were expecting anything from the applicant? Nothing from the applicant. So then, is, are there any members of the public here to speak on this item? I don't think so. Also deliberation. Questions? Comments? Councilmember Haven O'Donnell.
I just wanted, and Jason, you might have chimed in as well, the Economic Sustainability Commission deliberated and did not make a recommendation because they were kind of split on, on the concern about the vehicle parking and being able for folks to, who are coming into town, Jones Ferry Road and Damascus.
Outtest.
Correct. Right. So in terms of, of business growth and the interest of folks who are beyond, you know, who would be driving in.
And needing parking.
Yeah, right, right. So that the, in other words, the, from a business standpoint, the Economic Sustainability Commission folks deliberated this question of, are we only trying to focus on, you know, who's immediate or?
Access for all.
Exactly.
Right.
You know, we're not.
Um, yeah. Sorry. They were not, you know, were of the mind that we weren't preventing them from having parking, we just weren't requiring a minimum amount of parking. So we're really making it, or going ahead with this as written, would still give the developer and the business owner the latitude to decide for themselves how much car parking they need. So there was just some kind of, I would say, almost ideological difference about whether or not the town was in the job of protecting people from themselves, you know, so which, you know, which generally we're not. We're in the job of protecting people from their neighbors' actions. And so I think that was, so I think that was, that was kind of the split there. Yeah, so I think, yeah, just to kind of give a little more context to that. So there wasn't, there wasn't a clear kind of?
Yeah, they really liked the, the density aspect of it and the work-live aspect of it, but they, the concern was, as business people might be looking at, you know, how does a business expand beyond what could be base? So just, just so you know, because that's the only voice that you have from business folks, and that's why I thought it would be important to just say that publicly.
All right, thank you, Councilmembers Haven O'Donnell and Merrill. Any other comments or questions? And Tina, so not this slide, maybe the slide before.
You're looking for the one with the two variants?
Actually, the Section 2 and Section 2 alternate, and that's the decision point for us. And so if it's office and office assembly, which is Section 2 alternate, I know in Section 2, we're including Historic Rogers Road, Community Commercial. I know there's been some interest there for these neighborhood cafes and also HRR. And so I just kind of wanted to point that out as we move towards some type of decision about that. And if there is any concern about any of the other, any of the other zoning districts there in Section 2, Councilmember Merrill?
Just to kind of further elaborate on the discussion we saw in the Economic Sustainability Commission, there did seem to be, of the two folks that were generally against moving this, they seemed more comfortable with the more kind of measured approach, you know, like, well, if it were just these two districts, we might be more into it rather than, you know, they felt a little more shy about the widespread application of this.
And so that's fine, but again, we would exclude the Historic Rogers Road community, who has shown that interest in community commercial, and I just, I don't think it's a good idea to leave them out.
Fair.
I just don't. I know it's broad here, but I'm really kind of honing in, because I remember distinctly when they were talking about that and asking for the ability to be able to do that there.
Totally. Just wanted to kind of relay what we heard in that meeting.
Thank you.
That's a great point, and I don't think that was realized, that the HRR, you know, would be, would not be included. Is there a way that for the alternate, the HRR could be included? I mean, what?
That would be probably a question for, it is, that'd be a question. I think the concern is the broadness of Section 2.
Saying just pull out the HRR.
Pull out the HRR and the HRCC.
Yeah, and move that into the, oh, in the OA.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Haven O'Donnell, when you speak, can you move your mic a little bit closer?
I'm sorry. I apologize.
No problem, thank you.
Are you finished? Oh, go ahead, the name Councilmember Frey.
I don't think it was realized when the E S E was discussing it that the H R, the H R C C would not be captured, so, because that never even came up. But I think, and I remember the discussion, a very strong discussion on the Rogers Road community for live-work space and possibly cafes, and Reverend Campbell spoke eloquently about it. To me, it would make sense to move the H R C C and H R R into the alternate so that it can be included, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Frey?
Madam Mayor, I found the discussion that the planning board had on this subject pretty informative. You know, they, they hashed through all of this, but where I come down on this is in strong support of Section Two as written, because the other districts, in addition to O A, H R, C C, and H R R, are all business districts where this kind of use is, is self-evidently appropriate already. I think that the, the unusual ones are O A, H R, C C, and H R R for this kind of use, so I don't see any issue with moving Section Two as it is.
Okay, and so just for clarity, that this type of use, even if we don't choose Section Two, which includes H R, C C, and H R R, would still put Rogers Road in a position to have this use?
Uh, no, Madam Mayor, I'm suggesting we accept Section Two exactly as it is.
Oh, Section Two as is, even broadly or not, that's what you're saying? Okay, I misunderstood, my bad.
Because the, the other districts are all districts that already permit more intensive commercial than what we are proposing. So neighborhood, neighborhood cafe is a lighter use than what is already allowed in those districts.
Thank you for that. And then there was still the concern from the Economic Sustainability Commission. Was that, was that, or was it just a couple of people or?
Talking about this aspect of it, though.
No, but I mean, the broadness of Section Two, was there?
It was more just, just to kind of give a little bit more nuance to the split. You know, so the, the people that were kind of like, the, the two people of nine that were opposed to it. Yeah, I mean, you know, we have a very small sample in this case, but the two people that were opposed to it seemed more amenable to it if the scope were smaller. Two people were fully supportive of it, just like.
So it was split?
Right, exactly, so, just wanted to say that, yeah, of the two that were opposed to it, they weren't mortally opposed to it, they were slightly opposed to it and would have been better, they would have felt more comfortable.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Mayor. May I approach him now?
I'm fully supportive of Section Two as is, I think, yeah. And I also, you know, I want to just briefly address that I think it is, it is a good thing to have a diversity of businesses. I mean, you know, this would be incumbent upon a business owner to be wise and strategic about being able to sustain their own customer base within a walk radius, or a transit radius, or a bike radius, or a limited car radius. But I think that's a good thing, I think that's, you know, businesses like that can add quite a bit, can add quite a bit to our economic profile in town, and there's, you know, sort of a risk assessment in any business owner, a risk that I'm grateful to them for taking. And I think, yeah, that, to that end, I mean, I think my personal tolerance for that risk and the interest of sort of diversifying our business profile in town, maybe a little bit higher than some of the board was expressing. And I want to thank staff for going through this with us and broadening the aperture, and I think putting this in some context where it makes a lot of sense and makes it work well for this wonderful applicant. You know, this is all feeling consistent and practicable, and, yeah, I just really want to commend the work for it, so personally, when we're, when we're ready, I would like to move with the full Section Two provision.
Thank you, may I approach him now? Councilmember Frey?
I'll, I'll yield to.
Oh, Posada.
Uh, thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, thank you, Councilmember Frey. I, just procedural question, because I'm also ready to move with the question. Do we need to make a motion to close the public hearing, or?
Whenever we're finished deliberating, yeah.
Perfect, yes, similar, I won't dive too much into it. I think Section Two as written is going, is going to be where I'm going to land on this. I appreciate all the work that's been put into this. Just councilmembers, I want to move forward with this item, just whenever we're ready on it, but, yeah. Section Two.
My last thought on this is just to sort of answer that question about whether or not Carrboro is in the business of guaranteeing that all businesses have an oversupply of parking. I believe, I believe that we, we are not in that business, but specifically, I think that's important for the neighborhood cafe use in particular, so that it is not impinging on neighborhoods, including in O O A, H R, H R C C and H R R districts, by requiring them to have larger parking lots than makes sense for a business that might have a very small walk radius. I'm also ready to move this item.
All right, any further comments? So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we have Attachment A. Consistency resolution, I'm sorry. We'll wait for Tina. You're fine.
Looks like I've lost one of my attachments, just a second.
I've got it, I've got it right here in front of me, so I'll take a stab at it if I may.
Yeah, go right here. Councilmember Frey, Attachment A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, affordable housing, economic sustainability, and land use strategies noted, that the action is reasonable and in the public interest, and that we furthermore approve the proposed amendment to the text with Section Two used.
Second.
All right, so it has been moved and properly seconded for Attachment A of the consistency resolution. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero, and Attachment B.
Madam Mayor, I move Attachment B that we adopt the ordinance.
I'll take that one, too.
All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded.
If I may, just for the record, would you just be, repeat that your preference for Section Two?
Yes, thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina.
I move that we adopt the ordinance with Section Two.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Tina. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for Attachment B. All right, thank you. I believe that's, I believe that's the, the end of that. Thank you so much, Tina, guiding us through that. Wait for Councilmember Posada to return. Be okay, we're rolling, we'll keep on. All right, so Councilmember Posada has returned. Assistant Town Manager Parker, next item, public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item is a public hearing on the town manager's recommended budget for F Y 2025. The purpose of this agenda item is to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on the town manager's recommended budget for F Y 2025 as required by General Statute 159-12B. Darrell Keys, the interim Director of Finance, is here to give a brief overview and will be available to answer any questions for both this item and the next item, which is an action item.
Thank you so much, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing as Mr. Keys makes his way to the podium and prepares for, I assume, a brief presentation overview. Uh, Mr. Keys.
So, good, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I look forward to having a productive conversation with you all, and let's get started. So tonight, we'll look over the budget schedule, and given that most of the slides were presented two weeks ago, I will be very brief with my presentation. I added two slides related to our general fund balance and our debt, just, you know, wanted to give you guys more information on those two topics. And after my presentation, open the floor up to you guys to ask questions and to provide feedback. So, in terms of our budget development, we made it to the last part, and that's the public hearing and the adoption of fiscal year 25 annual budget. So on June 6th, the finance team, we published the budget book, and we made it available online, and we printed hard copies, and we distributed the hard copies to various locations here in Carrboro. And during normal business hours, we were available to answer questions and to listen to any feedback as it pertained to the manual, or to the recommended budget. And the objectives of the town manager's budget, this was presented two weeks ago, so I won't go into details on, on this slide, but as you guys can see, it aligns with the council priorities, controls costs while maintaining and improving services, and considers necessary capital expenditures. And here's our fiscal year 25 budget breakdown. As you guys know, there is a reduction from $81.1 million down to $68.3 million for fiscal year 25. In terms of our total revenue, we are projecting a 6% increase, which is $1.6 million. And in order to balance our budget, we had to, we are using more of our fund balance, and I'll discuss more of that in a few minutes. And our current fund balance is approximately $14.8 million. We won't know the current balance until after our fiscal year 24 audit, so we will know that amount maybe in August or September. So our general fund budget, we're projecting to spend $32.6 million, which is a 11.4% increase from last, or from this current fiscal year to next fiscal year. And here is a departmental breakdown of what the general fund budget looks like in terms of personnel and operating, and by department as well. And this slide was also presented a couple weeks ago, and it's discussed, it shows our historical history of our fund balance and our fund balance operating budget. Now, in terms of our fund balance, I wanted to go into a little bit of detail into this. After our fiscal year 23 audit, the report shows that our unassigned fund balance right here is 49%, which is approximately $12.3 million. The, the report also shows our available fund balance at 58.8%. I don't know if you guys can see that number, it's a little blurry. But what, and that's approximately $14.8 million. So what does this all mean? Means that the town's financial position is strong and healthy compared to our peers here in North Carolina. And we're now right in the middle in, in terms of our available fund balance as a percentage of our expenditures. And of our total expenditures, in terms of our available fund balance, we have approximately six and a half months of cash on hand. So in case something happens, that we can't generate additional revenue, we have six and a half months of cash to cover our annual, or cover our expenses, which is, no, great on our end. Oops. And our debt, and our total debt is $1.6 million. And this slide was also presented, so I'll go to the next slide, which will talk about our debt. Of our total expenditures, our debt represents 4.5% compared to our peers. We're, no, we're below our peers at the moment, which is great, and that 4% represents 4% of our total expenditures. The state recommends 15%, and we're far below that amount, or that percentage. One of the things that we will do, starting in fiscal year 25, is provide you all with a quarterly report, and that will include our revenue, how much we've spent to date, and our balances, they may include more information. But the goal is to give you guys information, to show you guys our financial activities. And one of my goals as the comptroller and the interim finance, finance director, is to ensure that we are on track, and my team and I will continue to monitor our financial activities and, and make sure that we are in compliance with federal, state, and local laws. And, oops, and that concludes my presentation, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Keys, and we're almost there.
Yes.
Congrats to the finance team and, you know, everybody that, department heads and la di da di and everybody that is involved, you know, in getting us to this, to this point, which hopefully we're about to adopt our town budget. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Keys? Go ahead.
Um, thank you so much. You did a great job. If you go back to the slide that shows the percentage of the fund balance, and I just, I couldn't read that.
Yeah, it's a little blurry. I was trying to make it bigger on the slide, and I came in here to look at it yesterday, and I was like, it's still blurry, I don't know how to make it clear, but I can try to, you know, read out the numbers for you.
At the top over here.
Yes.
At the 58, or?
So this is 58.8%. So we're like in the middle among our peers, so you have Clayton, so we're, we're like in the middle.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only comment I would make is, I'm just gonna, we're gonna say Carrboro's peerless.
Okay.
Carrboro's peer, no, Carrboro's peerless, so, you know, and we don't do things the way everybody else does, and I think that was said earlier tonight. So, when I look at, you know, the 58%, you know, I think that's awesome. I think what speaks to me more solidly is that it's $14.8 million.
Yes.
So, and I'm just going to put this question out there, and it has nothing to do with, you know, this budget process or what's being recommended, but it's something I've spoken to councilmembers about in, in this year, what we don't know, you know? And I'm just bringing this to the fore, because I've got mighty concerns about North Carolina and nationally of what we don't know. So, were we to have to stand alone on any particular matter come, the outcome in November, right? I would want to know that, so the six and a half months would mean nothing to me. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And the example I'm going to give that I'm very concerned about is immigration. So if something should completely go the way we wouldn't want it to go, and we have to find ways to stand alone for immigration and sanctuary and amnesty, or we have to find a way to support families with food, and we can't do that directly, we have to do it indirectly, and there would need to be a shift. And that's the only reason, you know, I, I just caution that we should think very seriously about how we use fund balance. And I just wanted to put that out there, because, you know, it's clear that, that activity is happening across this nation, and, you know, to, to look at how municipalities, states, and nonprofits are buffering themselves, or? or what is unknown. So I'll just leave it there.
And I forgot to mention that the town's target is between 22.5% and 35%. So we're surpassed that percentage, which is great. So that's why I said we just have enough cash on hand for six and a half months if, if we stop generating revenue.
Any members of the public that would like to comment on the budget? I see Community Home Trust, Ms. Kimberly Sanchez. Welcome. Hello.
Good evening. It is nice to see all of you. I am Kimberly Sanchez, Executive Director of Community Home Trust. CHT has been a partner of yours for over 30 years, and we are just incredibly grateful for your support. I know we are in this budget and want to just say thank you very much. In the next three to five years, CHT's inventory is going to double. That means that we're gonna have 600 affordable homeownership units and 150 rental units in Orange County. We are very excited about that. We're also working to prepare very hard for that. Increase inventory to make sure that we're providing the service that you all expect of us and have expected of us for the last 30 years. This year, I did wanna just note one new program that we started this year. It's called, we, we named it, and it was a whole staff group effort over like a six-month period of time to figure out a name. And ChatGPT was a part of this process. But we came up with the name of the program, and it's called Budget Your Way Home. And we're very excited about this program because this program helps people. One of the barriers that Community Home Trust has for some of our homeowners is that you have to go obtain a conventional loan. And there are just natural barriers to persons who are low income and also our BIPOC community regarding lending. And so recognizing that, we created this program, which is a six-month program where you meet with a, each person meets one-on-one each month with a HUD-certified counselor to help them with budgeting, with credit. We found other opportunities to help with like credit and then savings. And so they go through, the program participant goes through a whole six months, one-on-one. And at the end of the program, which will, our first pilot will go through and end in December of this year, we will be matching, along with NCHFA, savings. So you could save up to $10,000 between the three programs. A person could come away with $10,000, which is about what closing costs are right now, which is ridiculous and another barrier to homeownership. But it's a program that we're really excited about, and I will be reporting back on that in my quarterly reports. So wanted you guys to know about that new program that we just started and about all of the new growth that we're gonna be experiencing throughout the next three to five years. And so thank you again for all of your support. It's nice to be here and see you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone else? Yes, come on up. Oh, we have two people, Ms. Jackie Jenks, and you come on. Uh huh, yes. Welcome.
So as Ms. Sanchez, being the Executive Director of Community Home Trust, my name is Kelly Gregory, and I am a former board member of Community Home Trust. I'm a former board president of Community Home Trust. But most importantly, I am a homeowner in Community Home Trust. And I'm a longtime homeowner. I have been in my town home for 12 years, 12 years. And I'm one, I live in a community where I'm one of 17 affordable townhomes. And the other 38 townhomes are open-market townhomes, and there is no distinction between the community townhomes and the other ones. As a matter of fact, the community that I live in, I'm very much a part of the fabric of this community. I love my neighbors. My neighbors are teachers, book editors. They are also paramedics. And they are the fabric of what the town of Carrboro, the town of Chapel Hill, that make our communities work and make them diverse. Also, as part of being a homeowner, my child and the children in my community have access to excellent exemplary schools in the school system. I feel safe in my neighborhood. And that is a huge, huge benefit to living in an affordable home in a very good neighborhood where I feel safe. The children play in the, in the, on the sidewalks, and they run from house to house to play, and it is a safe community to live in. Also, there's no distinction between the townhomes that are affordable and the other townhomes. So we are a blended community, and I'm also involved on our homeowner association in making sure that the community that I live in remains safe and remains a community of choice for other homeowners. I want to thank the town council. I want to thank the mayor and for all their past and present and future support that you've given us. You have helped me, you have helped my family, and I am very grateful.
And you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. I think I saw Ms. Jenks' hand. Come on up, IFC.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fushi, Town Council, and the hard-working staff. I know the hour is late. It's the end of the budget process, so thank you for all of your work. I'm Jackie Jenks from Interfaith Council for Social Service, which has served this community for the past 60 years. And on behalf of IFC's members, staff, volunteers, and supporters, I want to thank you for our longstanding and ever-deepening partnership. As you know, IFC's work intersects with the town in critical ways as we connect with people experiencing homelessness, housing insecurity, food insecurity, and other crises. We especially wanted to extend our gratitude tonight to you for your very bold leadership in the budget process this year, especially the increased commitment to funding for human services and housing. I understand your investment in these supports has more than doubled. And that is incredible. And this is a game changer for the town and goes a long way to supporting the everyday needs of our neighbors who are disproportionately burdened by inequities in the high cost of living in our community. So thank you. We understand that this budget you will pass tonight includes continued funding for the only shelters in the county for adults and families, community house and home start, as well as support for the community kitchen, serving meals every day, and community market, offering free groceries and other household supplies. You are among many in our community who come together with monetary gifts, food donations, volunteer hours, and other in-kind supports to assure that IFC's doors are open for our neighbors every day, every single day of the year. And your support tonight is crucial to our sustainability. So thank you so much for your partnership.
Sure thing. Thank you, Ms. Jenks. Anyone else to speak on the budget? Now for the comments or questions from the council? So I, I do wanna say again who la di da di and everybody is. So certainly, you know, Mr. Keys, standing in the gap as interim finance director and comptroller. Thank you, as well as your team. Certainly Assistant Town Manager Marie Parker, Town Manager Patrice Tony, who is not here, and all our department heads who worked tirelessly on the budget and got us here. And so just really appreciative of our town staff. And so I do want to say that. If there is nothing else, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Key. You might need to stay up, Dada.
Okay, okay, I can stand up here.
Stay up. So I closed the public hearing. Now we can move into our general agenda. Assistant Town Manager Marie Parker, first item.
Thank you. The first item is the adoption of the FY 24-25 annual budget. The purpose of this agenda item is for the town council to adopt the annual budget for fiscal year 24-25.
Thank you so much. So we have just had a presentation from Mr. Keys. We have heard from community. Is there anything else, council members? I don't have, not one thing. Hey, so it looks like we have Attachment A through F. Oh, oh, hold on. Attachment A through F, and we have the annual, okay, that is right. Attachment A through F, and do we need to move through these individually or in one swoop? Do it in one swoop? So, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Posada.
Madam Mayor, I would move items, attachment, A through F, please.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Posada. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. So A through F is our annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2024-25. Attachment B, resolution adopting changes to position, classification, and pay plan. Attachment C, resolution approving the minimum salary and hourly rates for employees. Attachment D, fiscal year 2024-25, vehicle purchases. And attachment E, resolution to authorize designation of fund balance on June 30th, 2024 for carryover. Attachment F, resolution approving amendments to the miscellaneous fees and charges schedule. And so we do have a motion and second on the floor for attachments A through F. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? This motion carries unanimously 6 to 0. There's nothing else with that item. We have a budget.
Right. Thank you all. And just on behalf of the town staff, thank you for your leadership and commitment to serve in the community. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Keys.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, could we take a three-minute break?
We are in recess for five minutes and not three. We are in recess for five minutes and not three. All right. So we are back in session after a brief recess. Assistant Town Manager Parker, next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item is the Police Department Quarterly Equity Report. The purpose of this item is to provide a report to council on the quarterly equity report for quarters two and three for twenty twenty three. Chris Atack, our Chief of Police, will be presenting on this report.
Welcome, Chief Atack.
The chief. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Oh, there's the mayor. I looked and you were gone. I was a little stupefied for a minute. Good evening. Uh, this continues the, uh, quarterly reporting that has not been quarterly because of personnel turnover. So uh, we're trying to hit quarter two and three of twenty twenty three here for our quarterly report. A couple of things, um, before we start. Some of this, uh, this is a recreation of the previous report. So we have a new data analyst. Uh, there is one. The residency tracking is still under development. That's a bit of a challenge. We're trying to address that. So going forward, that will be there.
Chief Atack, you're closer to the microphone.
Sorry. Need a taller microphone. Um, there also is, um, a font issue in some of these, uh, so I apologize, but we'll, we'll get it. All right. So as we began again, we're doing quarter two. I'm gonna move this in front, if that's possible. No, I'm not. Just kidding. There we go. Thank you. All right. I just need, okay, awesome. All right. So this is quarter two and quarter three for twenty twenty three. Uh, so just to cover again, the twenty twenty policy goals established by the council at the time. Basically zero racial and ethnic disparities in a lot of these conditions, motor vehicle stop searches, use of force, marijuana, et cetera. Uh, quarterly report data, this began again back in twenty twenty. Um, and these are the items that we're going to go over tonight. Stop rates, demographic information, residency tracking, et cetera. I won't read the whole slide to you. So here we begin in the roadway demographics. Uh, so this is the demographics, the pie chart on the left is demographics of drivers. That's quarter two, twenty three through quarter one of twenty four. So that's an aggregate for those three quarters. Uh, our census data is on the right. And again, you see the font issue. I apologize for the Hispanic, uh, section of the pie. Uh, but we're showing census about twelve and a half percent and a little bit less, uh, for traffic crashes for that time period. Uh, weighted roadway demographics on quarter two, based on residency. Uh, this is what we're looking at. Um, and that's, this is that chart that will be developed next time, showing where people come from, because typically fifty percent of our stops are not folks from Carrow. So this is the traffic crash demographics, uh, for quarter two on the left, quarter three on the right. Uh, so we see there's some variance, uh, in the, in the percentages. And again, that's, yeah, the Hispanic section of the pie will have font issues later. So I'll do the simple math in my head for you. Uh, cause it can be, I don't know why it didn't show up, but it didn't. Total stops for quarter number two, uh, for twenty twenty three. So we have traffic stopped by race, pie chart on the left. Uh, we have Caucasian, that'll be white next time that came across Caucasian, uh, forty percent. And then we have, uh, black showing as thirty six percent, Hispanic nineteen, and Asian as five percent. Uh, and then traffic stopped by stop type, uh, on the right hand side. So roughly seventy two percent, what we call speed and safety. Violations. And then we have registration, investigation, seatbelt, other and equipment, uh, on the right. This is quarter three, the same, uh, data, but just for that quarter. Uh, so we see again the forty three percent for white, thirty one percent, uh, black, nineteen percent Hispanic and seven percent Asian. And again, the types seventy five percent, speed and safety on the right, uh, and with a twenty five percent of it being the mix of registration, investigation, seatbelt, other and equipment. So these are the stop trends by quarter. So these come up to quarter one, twenty twenty four, because we have that data. Uh, but we're, we're in quarter two and quarter three for twenty twenty three. So we're looking at two ninety seven, two eighty nine stops for the, for that quarter. And then we have the, uh, the race portion here broken out. So again, just shown here is the bar chart for quarter two and quarter three. And then stop by stop types for quarter two, we have speed and safety on the left, broken down by race. Uh, as well as across the other, uh, variants for registration, equipment, investigation, other, uh, and seatbelt. There was one for that. And then this is quarter three again, left or right.
Do you mind if I ask a question as we go along?
Oh, go ahead.
Mm hmm. Councilmember Frank. So much. Chief Atack, I just want to stop you in the middle, so I don't have to try and circle back at the end. Do you mind reminding me of the, um, current policy on stops for registration alone?
So when a tag is expired, that's not something we, we enforce. Now, if there's a registration where there's like a DMV has canceled the plate, uh, pickup plate order, that's something we do enforce, because that has something to do with the insurance and, and also the state regulation. But yes, for, for expired tag, we leave it alone, minor stuff like that. Yes, ma'am.
One follow up. So an officer riding behind a car with an expired, uh, sticker or whatever. I mean, that's how it all starts, right?
Uh, so, so if you run the tag through DMV, they will give you information. Yes, if it's an expired tag, if the tag comes back to that type of vehicle, if there's an insurance stop on it, if there's a pay, uh, plate pickup order, it'll tell you a whole bunch of things. Yes.
But then again, it could just be that the person just had not updated or put the sticker on the plate. So when you run it, you find out all of that. That's what you're saying.
Yes. So sometimes when you look at a tag visually, someone may have gotten their, they may have moved. They may have gotten their sticker and their dog ate it. It may have fallen off years ago before they made them better or harder to steal. People would steal each other's stickers. So they take their twenty four and put on their twenty three. And so, so yeah, there's some, we'll call it tomfoolery going on there. Um, but I've, I've also got some stats later as we talk about issues we're having with vehicle theft. Uh, and registrations on vehicles of late that have really been a challenge for our folks. But yes, when you run that plate through, uh, DMV, you will get all sorts of information on the vehicle. Yeah. Sometimes there's an innocent mistake. You sell your car, you sold your Ford, you buy a Nissan, it comes back to Ford, you're driving a Nissan. We stop you, oh, I just bought it. Here's, okay, it happens. Then sometimes a car stolen. So it just, it just depends on what the circumstances of that, of that stop are. Whoops. What am I doing here? I'm going the wrong way. All right, here we go. Uh, so this is quarter two enforcement action. So we have arrest, citation, no action and a warning. Uh, just broken down by demographics and the raw numbers on the right. Typically with Carrow, fifty percent of our stops end up in a warning. That's either written warning or a verbal warning. Um, if you look at the racial numbers, they're a little bit different. In twenty twenty two, we did a dive into the actual charges. So when you look at the charges, you will see alignment along racial numbers for the type of charge. Now, when you're just in aggregates, you will see some, some variance from warnings and citations, uh, and arrests. Most of the arrests for traffic stops, whether there be a warrant or DWI in general. This is quarter three. Again, it's the same demographics and percentages on the left from arrest, citation, no action, and then warning. These are for quarter two, the traffic stops leading to a citation or arrest. So we have the green, uh, line is the number of stops that led to charges. And then we have the orange line is the total number of stops broken down by demographic. And then this is that same data for quarter three. Again, the green line shows the total stops that lead to charges, and on the right is the total number of stops, uh, broken down by demographic. These are searches for quarter two. So you have a frisk, incident arrest and probable cause, again, broken down by demographic. On the right, you have the items, uh, that were discovered in the search. So you have drugs, alcohol, money weapons or other, uh, that were found in those, those searches. And again, this is that same data for quarter three. Uh, we have a, we have two frisks, uh, searches, incident arrest and probable cause. Uh, and then the, the raw data over here on the right. So use of force, so by policy, under use of force policy, any force over, uh, level two is, you have to write a report and ask, yeah, we investigate this, turn it over to supervisor, and then a command level review, uh, determining the reasonableness of that force. Uh, so for quarter two, we had seven use of force incidents. Uh, all were male, uh, above the age of thirty. Uh, so we have, uh, hand, when it says hand, that means just, someone put their hands on somebody and maybe tried to bend their arm behind their back to put a a handcuff on them or something. We talk about pointing of a weapon, that's in a, a situation where the officer points their weapon at the person. Again, that has to be justified. Uh, that is use of force, that is documented. Uh, electronic device or taser are similar, uh, they're the same thing. Uh, so that's if a taser is pointed or a taser is discharged. Several years ago, the taser use, to use a taser, it became, you had to justify a higher level of force. That was a fourth circuit federal court case at a Pinehurst that changed it. It used to be if someone, you were trying to arrest somebody and they ran away, you could tase them. Well, the Pinehurst case changed that. Now they have to be assaultive towards you. So, uh, that changed that. So we used to see a few tasers. Now we very rarely use them because they're at that higher level of force.
And what, I'm sorry. We talk about pointing the, pointing the weapon. What, what kinds of things, what were situations, when, when you're pointing a weapon, it's gotta be, maybe the officer feels like his life is threatened or other people around are threatened or?
So for this quarter, the, I've got a couple of the details of some of the, some of the actual instances. So in one of these, it was involuntary commitment, was being served. The subject was actively resistant and two officers put their hands on them and took control of the person to get them in custody. We also had, I chuckled because I know the details of this case. It's, it was an arrest and then the suspect ran out of the police department. Uh, so that was a new officer and he's since learned that lesson. Uh, but we all got to go over to Weaver Street, uh, and, and bring him back. And we put hands on, because he, he wasn't willing to come. We had to bring him back to the police department. Uh, we had an armed home invasion suspect that was taken, was arrested at weapon. Weapon was pointed, a firearm was pointed. It was in that situation, the report was, and he was breaking into a residence with a weapon. Uh, we have a DWI arrest where a sus- suspect pulled away and was getting aggressive. That was a hands on, right? Uh, we had a home invasion suspect, another one where a weapon was pointed and someone was taken into custody. And then we had an aggravated assault and a fleeing to elude arrest, uh, where they used hands on and they also pointed their weapon. So if you're chasing somebody, if they run, sometimes you point your weapon as a safety for the officer, for the folks around. Uh, once that threat, that person is under control, of course, then the weapon's away and it's, it's documented. And it's reviewed. It's reviewed by the officer supervisor as well as at a command level. And I also dig into it too, because I want to know, uh, what, what decision our folks. So that was quarter two. Uh, for quarter three, I also have.
Chief Atack, before you move on, were all of the, were all seven use of force incidents found to be justified?
Yes. So this is quarter three with the, uh, same data, yeah, numbers higher, eleven use of force. Uh, here's some of the breakdown. Uh, on that, we have, again, we have hands being used, uh, pointing of a weapon in, it looks like four cases. Then we have electronic device and taser. Those are pretty much synonymous, uh, same, same, um, same item. So for this, uh, some of the instances, an arrestee got their handcuffs around front in the vehicle. But they had their, they were handcuffed behind the back. They were able to, some people are very flexible. I'd never, I can never do that. But, but some folks have that ability. Uh, and so the officer had to put hands on the person and rehandcuff them behind them. That's a safety, uh, safety, um, protocol and policy that we do. Uh, in another case, we had a subject who was experiencing a mental health crisis, uh, driving the vehicle and tried to run over an officer. Uh, as they were trying to stop her from driving in a very erratic way in a very high density neighborhood. Uh, so that was a weapon pointed initially, and then they went hands on to get her into custody after the vehicle was stopped. Uh, we have a B and E suspect, sorry, breaking and entering suspect. I'll try to talk in acronyms. We have a breaking and entering suspect who was running. An officer pointed a taser at them and was able to take them into custody. We also have another breaking and entering suspect, uh, firearm was pointed, uh, at them. We have a domestic violence suspect who got a taser pointed at them. A DWI suspect tried walking away. Uh, can't do that. And then another breaking and entering suspect, the weapon was pointed. And then we had a disturbance where a suspect was aggressive and officers went hands on to bring that person, uh, under control, uh, safely. And then again, we had another impaired suspect trying to drive away where the officer was able to drive, uh, to grab them. And that, so that's, that's for quarter three. That's some of the details of.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Atack, just a couple of follow up questions on these. Where it says electronic device and taser, you said those are roughly the same. Could you sort of clarify?
They are, they are the same. I don't know, it's a weird statistical thing, but it, we got away from the brand name. So, so the taser has had a variety of iterations of names over the years. It was an electronic controlled device, electronic control weapon, a taser specifically. So there's, I think that's probably some.
I should understand those to be synonymous. Okay.
Yes. The only other, um, less lethal item that we have is what we call the bolar wrap, but that's not a, an electronic device. That's the, um, that's the Kevlar rope that you can actually wrap somebody up in to restrict their movements if they have a weapon or whatever. So, but that would not qualify as an electronic device.
Understood. Um, in the incidents involving an electronic device that you're describing here, you said it was pointed at them. Um, was it discharged at them?
So I'm gonna have to clarify. I don't believe so, but I will find out for you, because we don't see a lot of taser use anymore because of that uh, fourth circuit decision. We do see weapon, uh, the taser pointed, and that has become very effective. Uh, because they've built a reputation, be like, ooh, I don't want that. So usually it's pointed, but I'll clarify that for you.
Thank you. And one other question about, um, about department policy involving, um, it sounds, I'm, I'm sort of hearing a trend that pointing a weapon tends to happen with, uh, breaking and entering case.
So it's situational, but if, so if, if an officer, let's say we stop a stolen vehicle. Uh, you're doing a felony vehicle stop, officers will point weapons because they're dealing with a felony. You have a house that's broken into, you have someone inside who's maybe not responding, you have the, hey, come on out, look, we know you're in there. As officers enter, they will have their firearms out to protect themselves, should they encounter something. So.
If I could summarize, let me know if I have this correct, that, um, pointing a weapon in this case as a matter of policy is not directly connected to the level of threat displayed by the particular suspect, but has to do with the severity of the, of the crime that you were looking at of the incident.
Could be both, right? So the use of force has to be reasonable under the totality of the circumstances. So it could be somebody is brandishing a weapon in a crowd and that's reasonable in that situation. Or if you're going to, stopping a suspect for, who's a suspect in an armed robbery, that's a yes. For one hundred percent, we'd expect the officers to take measures to protect themselves. It's, it is yes to both, but it's, it's again, it's situational based on each instance.
Thanks for providing that clarity.
These are the complaints, uh, for quarter two and quarter three. So we had three, uh, in quarter two. Uh, two were listed as unfounded and one is not sustained. Uh, for quarter three, we had three sustained. Two of those were the way somebody was addressing somebody. So they were, we have very high expectations for the way our officers, uh, interact with the public, even folks who maybe are not having the greatest day. Uh, and so we're very strict on the way, the expectations that we have. And so in two of those sustained, the officer did not meet those expectations. It wasn't a major thing, but it was something we're like, yep, one hundred percent. The third sustained, I'm not sure if you're gonna ask about that, I will find out for you. I can't think about it off the top of my head. Uh, a proper conduct, um, determination is if an officer has a situation, follows the protocol and the policies as they're written, and that's what they did in the situation. Somebody could complain, but we're saying, no, in this instance, this was, this was what the officer should do. This is the policy, this is the procedure, and they were correct in that, if that makes sense.
I do have a question. Um, could you distinguish for me the difference between unfounded and not sustained?
So I have never liked that distinction. That predates me. And one of the things I'd like to do is clear that up, because effectively they're the same thing. Um, so not sustained would be like, we don't, we found, we have no evidence of that and unfounded is the same. So yes, that predates me. And yeah, that's one of the things I would like to clean up too. Effectively, it's the same thing. We found no, uh, no evidence to suggest that the complaint had any veracity to it, uh, for what was in that situation. So this is, uh, the diversion and deflection. We like acronyms. I put D and D and it's not Dungeons and Dragons. It's not that I'm telling on myself. Uh, so this is data tracking that we started in July of twenty twenty three. Um, so this is tracking anytime an officer could charge but elects not to. My interview here for employment back in nineteen ninety eight was about voluntary compliance. And so we try to give people the option to voluntarily comply before it becomes an enforcement option. Uh, and so that's, that's what a lot of this is going to reflect. Uh, so there are forty eight instances in quarter three. Uh, this was a longstanding practice, but we actually never tracked it. Right? All of the, uh, our record management system did not have this. So we actually came up with a coding. Then officer will put that into report, it gets reviewed by the supervisor, and then we look at it and then it gets added into this aggregate tracking. And then, of course, we had our diversion social worker, Mon Rita, use starting, uh, in March. So going forward, we're gonna have some data for that. Uh, we actually now have a CCDR referral bank in our name bank. So if we write a report, you're in it. We add you to the name bank and now we can put alerts on people or like, hey, they're a CCDR person. So the officer knows, hey, maybe I can talk to Mon Rita, maybe I can find out who their case manager is. So we can, we can try to find that out.
Could you, um, just let me know, what is the name bank?
Oh, I'm sorry. So if, if I gotta write a, well, I gotta write a report. I have to put a name in the report. In order to create the name in the system, I have to fill it all out. Uh, so I'd have to put like, Atack, Chris, I'm not gonna tell you my middle name, but, and the address, date of birth, all that material goes in there into the records management system. And then you can also hear in the report, if that makes sense.
Would it be accurate to describe the name bank as the database that the department keeps on people who come into contact with the department?
Yes. It's, yes, it's, it's part of our bigger record management system or RMS, but yes, the name bank is one of them. We have traffic accidents, traffic stop, uh, incident reports, all of the things. But yes, that is one.
Chris, I had a question regarding the diversion and deflection. Since the, um, diversion social workers started in twenty four, this March. So those interactions wouldn't be reflected in quarter two and three?
Correct, right.
So do you anticipate that that could shift, for example, So do you anticipate that that could shift, for example, going back a few slides? It was, there was use of force under, under use of hands. Do you anticipate that that would, might shift that in, in future or?
It's going to be situational. If, if, I talked about, when we were talking about this grant last year, I talked about maybe some secondary ideas that we had that this person could do. And the reality is what we've been finding out, the caseload and the work that Mon Rita's involved in allows very minimal time during the week for any sort of co-response. Now she's tracking both her CCDR casework as well as referrals from our officers. So we will have some data on how many cases were referred to her, what she's doing. So we'll have that data going forward. But the actual, like, this is happening now, it's not matching up when she's available, if that makes sense.
Yes.
And so that is in there. After she had been hired, it was 30 days, she and Ryan Daniels, our captain, sat down and came up with some criteria that, hey, here's where she wants to come out and all that. But the reality is with her workload, it's just not consistent, if that makes sense.
And we had talked about, what is it now, two years ago, when one of the safety task force reports were given about hiring two people. Is there any discussion in terms of a timeline of looking at that for next year?
One of my requests was for a second position, starting July 1st. And I, if I paid attention earlier, I think it went through. So, so I'm hopeful that that person, so, so kind of what we're doing are, if, I don't want to get off topic, because I, but basically this second position would allow the specific focus on the co-response. And we're also, Chapel Hill's running a one-year pilot on a care team, which is pretty much Durham's heart team, right? They've got a three-person care team that's limited, so Orange County's contributing folks in Chapel Hill. So my, my loose perspective is get this person in the co-response, but also involve them and Mon Rita in the care team discussion, how we can expand that out past Chapel Hill.
Excellent, thank you.
This is my chart, I made these charts, the other person made it, so I apologize. But this is just kind of an aggregate of some of the types of incidents where the officer is deflected and diverted. So we have some fraud, indecent exposure, DWI, alcohol, drugs or vehicle searches, drugs, paraphernalia, trespassing, disorderly conduct and larceny. So what you would all call is kind of low-level, maybe disturbance, right? Some of those kind of situations. So exactly kind of at the core of where you wouldn't just needlessly want to put somebody into the criminal justice system. This is the demographic data, broken down for those 48 cases for, for this quarter, which was quarter three for 2023. So we're seeing kind of how that breaks down. So that's going to be reasonably consistent. We have now quarterly data up through this past quarter and it's, it's going roughly in this direction from a demographic standpoint.
Would you say that's disproportionate?
I would say it's proportionate to the type of calls we're getting, but when you look at like a population, yes, it would be disproportionate from a census data. But it's a question of folks involved in certain things. No, if that makes sense, these are the calls that we're getting, so they're proportionate to our calls, I think. I'd have to, I can run, I can figure that one out, but.
Thank you.
I'd say yes and no would be my answer, it doesn't give you the, sorry. And then some of the, just the key takeaways here, of course, safety-related stops are priority in a significant majority of overall stops. Minor registration equipment stops are prohibited unless there is a safety hazard. I didn't want my officers to watch something that is a safety concern and just be like, well, you know, we can't. Because I don't, I don't think that, that serves anybody well. Over 50% of traffic stops end with a warning, either verbal or written. Probable cause search rate is high, complaints are low in number, incidents of use of force are low, seven and 11. And then diversion and deflection data is being tracked. So that's all I have, so any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chief ATAC. Did I see Councilmember Merrill?
I was just wondering what the probable cause search rate fine number.
Search rate, so that.
He said it's high, but, you know.
So that, what that means is, so if, if an officer, we can use this data. So we have 18, I'm sorry, 20 is the green line is probable cause searches. So we had 20 probable cause searches in that quarter. And then if you look to your left here, we have contraband found on, one, two, three. We have multiple contraband listed through drugs, alcohol, money, weapons or other that are found in those searches. So if, it's basically, you're saying there's a, there's a strong correlation between a probable cause search, which is that legal standard to do that warrantless search of a person or a vehicle. So you're seeing a lot of fines on those, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I was looking for that actual number.
Yeah. Quarter two is right here. So we had, if I can do math, 15, 18. And then there's the fines on the right, so we're looking at, looks like 11 folks. And then it's list out specifically what was found in, in those.
Thank you, Adam Mayor. Chief, thank you so much for the presentation and for, I do appreciate, the first time I saw one of these and some of the things that you've added in response to what council has asked for, so I do thank you for that. Kind of my question's a little bit outside of this report. I had conversation with a couple of folks over the last week or so when they realized that we were going to have a report and they, a couple of them, mostly in apartment complexes, wanted to kind of get a better understanding of what is the criteria to have like a police officer stationed like in the parking lot of the apartment complex? Is that something that folks request? Is that something that happens when there is more activity? I ask, you know, in one of the cases, if someone recently moved to a different apartment complex where they were at like a neighborhood and are like wondering, does that mean there's a lot of crime here, what happens? You know, so I honestly, I was like, I don't know what that criteria is to have a police officer stationed outside of any area. So I kind of wanted to pose that question to you.
There's going to be a number of reasons, right? Some could be call-driven, so if you had a complex that was maybe having a lot of break-ins at night, vehicles, a lot of vehicles stolen, an officer could just drive through, hey, look, maybe I'll be seen for a little bit, you know, maybe try to move something elsewhere, deter somebody. It could be the officer looking at data, it could be the management making a request, it could be any of the other. Where, we try to be as responsive as we can, but to your point, I think sometimes we also don't want to over respond and over police, right? And, and I think that's that balance, so is to try to be present, be seen, but don't just hang out. So that's, any of those could drive that.
None, that's good to know. I think one of, I guess my response is going to be that and also let them know to talk to their own property managers if that's something that property has asked for. I, you know, I don't want to assume any situations, what's happening, this is what I'm posing it to you and I thank you for that. I do want to go back, not coming back to the actual report. Can you go back to like the substantiated, or not sustained, not sustained? You mentioned that there's, there you go, unfounded and not sustained, you said they're basically the same thing. So I guess my question is like, what situation would be, where's the nuance there? Does a nuance exist or is just someone?
So as it was developed years ago, it's a vestige and I don't like it because I don't, to me, unfounded and not sustained effectively is the same thing.
Yeah.
I think part of that is trimming that out so the making that it's clear. Someone files a report, whether it's not sustained or it's unfounded, what is it? Well, let's call it unfounded, we'll get rid of not sustained. But yeah, that's, effectively they are the same thing and they're just, it's a vestige from prior iterations of the development of the complaint software.
Not just, so it's, like, I can see it. Yeah, okay, I, I kind of get, I get where you're going at, but that'd be helpful to clear up. And then last one I have is the, the trends, we can go to the trends, the stop trends. Alright, so I'm looking at the race proportion stops, right? So from 2021 to quarter one of 2024, quarter one, you do see a substantial enlargement of Hispanic stops. Is there, I, I wonder if there's been any kind of research as to how that's been playing out?
I got the, the Chambers data book the other week and I always love diving into that because there's so many interesting things that I don't think about. One of the data points that I found very interesting and I tried to get to drill down into it was the percent of, percent of workers who worked from home, right? And this was so, in the previous year, the working residents who answered work from home in Carrboro was 22%. So I asked for the breakdown, it wasn't, they didn't have much of the breakdown. So I'm curious what that means. Does that mean, is 22% of our driving population not driving as much? That's what it would mean to me, right? And then the question is, where does that 22% skew, right, demographically? So I think there are a couple of things going on. One, I think less people are driving. Also in Carrboro, 9% of workers take public transportation. I don't have the data how that breaks down demographically either, asked for it, but there was some, it wasn't much and there was a margin of error issue that covered the entire percentage. So I don't know that data, so I think that's a possibility. I think also, if you look at the overall numbers, when we were doing 800 stops, I think you probably got a better dispersion. One, because everything was on the table, right? We didn't restrict it. I pulled some data, I'll call them municipality one and municipality two. They're in Orange County, I'm not going to tell you beyond that. But one has, they don't have a restrictive traffic stop policy, okay? So it's pretty much, they focus on moving violations, but it's not restrictive. 70, 75% of their stops are warnings, 27% of their stops are of black folks. Municipality number two, very restrictive stops. 75% citations, 30% of stops are black. So we're a little bit higher than that, dependent upon which we're in. So the question is, we have three different traffic stop policies and we still see disparity, but we also see, I don't know if they're increasing or decreasing, I don't know that. But I think there's a couple of things going on with small numbers, right, for us. And you see we're getting reasonably consistent. We are still short. I think if you have, there was a study years ago that if you had a traffic unit, traffic units specifically on a highway running radar have less racial disparity than all of travel, all of traffic stops, right? Because I guess they're just, they're just doing that one thing. And so you'd get better alignment with your demographics, right? So, so there's a couple of things going on. I worried if we limited it too much, are we only going after the serious one? The serious charges, do those skew a certain way? I, I don't know. But, but yes, to your point, and I think, as a member now, brought this up last time I was here, about that same concern. And so I have a couple of hypotheses, I'm not exactly sure what that is in terms of going forward. So it may stabilize, it may not, I'm not sure.
And I appreciate that. And I think, you know, a couple of things I look at is the numbers as a whole, right? So I, I'm glad that you're thinking of it and trying to figure out different methods of addressing some of these issues and I, and I thank you for that. I, I, I hope as we move forward, there is some ways of figuring out where those disparities lie and how we can address them individually ultimately. I do think that you and your team have done a much better job than many communities across North Carolina have. So I do appreciate all the work that y'all do and I'm excited to see results as we bring in, remind me her name.
Mon Rita?
Mon Rita, yes. And I'm excited to see how that changes how folks are interacting with law enforcement as a town, as a whole. So I appreciate all your work, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, just wanted to say thank you for entertaining my questions as we went through. I find it really helpful to sort of pull some of that detail out as we go through and I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you.
Excellent. You have one data analyst?
So we have a part-time data analyst, so he.
It's not full-time.
Yes, and that was another discussion when we had the community safety discussion back in January, I believe. That was one of the things we're considering looking at, so yeah.
And how are you doing with positions? Are you fully staffed, are you still a little?
So we just had two people start Monday. Now they will be going to B L T, so that's, we're looking at roughly a year before they're on their own doing police work. But we still, even with them hired, we're still short five.
Five, okay. That's all I had, Councilmembers. All we had to do was receive your report, thank you, as always, and we will see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief ATAC. Assistant Town Manager Parker, while Chief ATAC is closing some stuff out, move to the next item, please.
Thank you. The next item is the site assessment report on town-owned land identified for possible affordable housing use. The purpose of this agenda item is for the town council to receive a report from Summit Design and Engineering Services on the site assessment of identified town-owned land for possible affordable housing use. William Wirt, the project manager at Summit Design and Engineering Services is here to give an overview of the report and Anne Marie is here as well for any questions or feedback. Mr. Wirt.
Welcome and thank you for your patience.
You, I do have a question.
Mr. Wirth?
Wirth.
W O R T?
W I R T.
W I R T, Wirt, thank you.
Yes, sir. And if you want to move it. Okay, thank you. Alright, good evening, my name is William Wirt. I'm the project manager with Summit Design and Engineering who oversaw the due diligence report for the two properties in question. Pathway Drive, as we'll call it here, and Crest Street. We also worked with Three Oaks Engineering who did some environmental assessment, excuse me, on identifying streams, endangered species and habitats and some buffer regulations as well, which I'll, I'll discuss here tonight. I'll just say from the outset here, a due diligence report, forgive me if I'm telling you things you already know, is simply a report to, for a developer or an owner to build off of, to decide what kind of development they're going to do and to decide if they're going to do anything on the land at all. So that was the purpose of, of this report, which covered four things, four categories, an existing condition survey and a tree survey, which covered topography, existing buffers, easements and encroachments and the tree inventory. So the existing condition survey is exactly that. It's just supposed to convey what is existing on the sites, not necessarily used for plating purposes or as an ALTA. It's not necessarily legal, but it's, it's used as a starting point to begin site design and site analysis. The geotechnical report, points of focus were analysis, analysis of existing soils and groundwater conditions, depth of rock, which there is a lot on both sites, recommendations for the foundations you'll need, the type of subgrade treatment that you'll have to perform if you decide to build here, and then pavement design as well. And the last two are the environmental reports, Phase One Environmental Site Assessment, an ESA, the wetland stream and buffer delineation and the protected species habitat assessments and surveys. Those last two items there is what Three Oaks provided. And then the preliminary stormwater impact analysis, what we call the SIA. That basically reviews stormwater management requirements as set forth by Carrboro. Since Carrboro is the authority having jurisdiction, you might see the abbreviation AHJ in the presentation. It also presented stormwater control measures. As some citizens pointed out, we did not design stormwater control measures. We only listed ones that would be effective for this site if you chose to develop. And then low impact development was another point of emphasis we were asked to look at. Low impact development is exactly what it sounds like. How do you specify requirements for the development you're proposing so that you have a lower impact on things like stormwater runoff, groundwater, affecting groundwater, tearing down trees and clearing the site? So I'll start with the survey. I think you know the subject site Pathway Drive pretty well. So it's really made up of three properties. So it's really made up of three properties. The first one is bisected by Pathway Drive, the one to the east side, right here. And then the one most north, which is bisected by a perennial stream and is buffered. You have some easements, sewer easements on there. And they're all zoned, some form of residential. And then the Crest Street site was down at the end of Crest Street and is a single property, also bisected by a stream and covered with easements. So the topography, like people have said, for both sites, we'll start with Pathway, is, is, I mean, is steep. It's about 11%. And that is what I would call like a median slope across the site. So in the areas that you're probably going to build in, if you chose to do so, you'd be dealing with an 11% slope with grading, with cutting that down, put your buildings on, put your roads in. Everything flows towards the stream. We go back real quick. There it is. Everything goes towards the stream, even most of this, most of this topography here, which really slopes off into neighbors' properties in development, you know, you would end up directing all of that, that way. Crest Drive is, is pretty much the exact same situation. It's smaller. You have a much shorter flow path across your site to get to your stream, which eventually carries all the runoff off your site. So you have an even steeper slope, about 12% in the main area where you would build. We'll discuss building, buildable area in the stormwater report. So we also look at, with existing condition surveys, what type of restrictions are on your property. The biggest ones are buffers and easements. On the subject sites, you've got water and sewer easements. There's one combined, meaning there's, there are water and sewer together. And then stream buffer, which is, which was pulled from the town of Carrboro's GIS, lists Zone One and Zone Two as 30 feet. And then in the environmental investigation, since those have been recorded on GIS, have actually been updated to be much wider than 30 feet. So those would need to be updated into development plans during your permitting process if you chose to move forward. You've got some tree houses on Pathway, some fences and some driveways that encroach. That's obviously an owner decision on how you want to deal with those. The sewer easement here on Pathway, where you're looking just north of Pathway, is highlighted in yellow there. It looks like you have the majority of the easement on your site. You've got a little bit that comes onto these neighbors' property, that encroaches onto these neighbors' properties here. You've got existing tree houses that were picked up and a fence line going up. So I, so we rotated the map so we could see it a little bit more. So north is this way. Still on the Pathway, Pathway Drive site, here at your creek, you've got another sewer easement running along your creek, which is typical. You gravity your sewer. And so typically sewer outfalls are located close to streams. You'll also see here buffers. Here's your 30. Your Zone Two buffer is 30 feet, as defined by Carrboro's GIS. Zone One is 30 feet. And then you have ephemeral streams here, which we'll talk about shortly, and those are buffered as well as Zone Two. Zone One and Zone Two have different restrictions based on the AHJ Carrboro, or if there's a watershed restriction, like Jordan Lake's watershed restrictions on what you're allowed to build in zones, you might be able to encroach on Zone Two with fill slopes, and you might not be able to touch Zone Ones at all, just depending on the regulations that are set in place at that site. Crest Street, again, sewer easements, waterline easements, encroachments and buffers. The tree survey was provided to count the trees. All of the trees that qualified were large caliper trees, typically like 12 inches in diameter or bigger. They are identified so that the developer can understand the impact of clearcutting the site, what kind of species you'd be taking down, and depending on your land architecture requirements, what kind of species you might have to put back in development. Pathway Drive has 312 that qualify as such trees, and Crest Street has 46. Okay. So soil conditions, your geotech summary here, you're located in what's called the Slate Belt in North Carolina. You have a lot of rock on this site. Volcanic and igneous rock. Weathered rock is, is a subcategory of, of that, which is located a little bit higher towards the surface, typically, and is starting to break down and become soil. It's still hard to rip out of the ground. Bedrock is even harder. We found weathered rock at five borings, bedrock at three borings. And groundwater was found at one boring on Crest Street at about three feet deep. And you can expect to find groundwater higher in the soil strata as you get closer to streams. The geotech report listed that the soil conditions of the site are suitable to development. So I'll just take a minute here to clarify that. Suitable, they mean suitable for development, or we mean suitable for development in the tight scope of geotechnical analysis. Meaning you can build on this material on your site. There's nothing that is particularly restrictive. No super high groundwater. Rock is good to build on because it's stable and your foundations won't sink. So from a geotechnical perspective, it's suitable for development. The recommendations were listed. Foundations, the top two there, spread footings and continuous wall footings are typical of what you'd find on like a single-family home, maybe some townhomes. Monolithic slabs and turned-down footings can also be found on those, I think like slab-on-grade houses and things like that. If you don't have a design, a structural design for your maximum load, the building code defers to 2,000 pounds per square foot. So that, what's found on site is, is suitable for that bearing load. And then once you, if, in the case where you decided to develop, you would go in and do further geotechnical investigation, as some people have pointed out. And then if the structural engineer provides load capacities, that bearing pressure could go up. Controlled fills are good. CL, ML, SM, those are all types of soils. Clay and silt and sandy silt, which are good to build on. And then density requirements for putting those in are all 95 to 98% compaction. All right. Environmental reports and summary. The phase, the Phase One ESA is performed per the standards set forth by the American Standards Testing Materials, ASTM. And so all of the findings in this report are based off of the standards set forth These reports are, are done to identify R C, REC, that's hazardous substance. Usually that means, that means something related to petroleum, something that is on-site, something that is likely to be on-site, or something that has potential for future release No environmental concerns were, were identified as part of these sites. And no significant data gaps were, were identified either. Meaning like all of the records kept on this site, as far as environmental assessments go, have been continuous through the years as it's been sold or as it's been looked at for development.
Mr. Wirt, could I pause you there?
Yes.
Would it be a fair summary to say that, that ESA Phase One report, what you're basically saying is, you're confident that nobody dumped petroleum products on the site and that those records could not have gone unfound had someone done that? Is that sort of a general?
Correct. As, as, yeah. Based on the standards set forth by the ASTM.
I just want to be clear about like what that, that scope is not, when you're talking about environmental hazards, you're talking about a specific kind of environmental hazard and data about it.
Yes.
Rather than maybe the broader common use of the term environmental hazard.
Right. You could think like dumping, dumping hazardous material on-site. Okay. So Three Oaks Engineering goes out and does an environmental assessment. We work with them all the time. They do stream evaluation and they do species evaluation. The ones you've got here, tri-colored bat, you've got NLEB, another type, and then Atlantic pig toe, I believe is a fish or a mussel.
I had to look it up. It's a mussel.
Yeah, a mussel. Then the bald eagle. All of these are listed in databanks that the state keeps up with as potential impact animals. So they keep an eye out for these particular species when they go to look for habitats and when they go to look for those, those creatures actually on-site. The ones that are present are, are forested roosting and forested roosting for the bats. So basically, there's evidence that bats are roosting on-site. So if you find that in a development and you want to develop the site, there's a specific period of time during the year that you're allowed to clear, because eventually the bats will leave for a season and then you're allowed to clear there. Or there will be some other type of, some other type of regulation that puts restriction on the clearing type. Perhaps you're only allowed to clear 30% of the site, as an example. They also found the buffers here. This is pretty dense, but all channels are within the Jordan Lake watershed and outside University Lake, which is a really restrictive watershed to build in. You've got perennial UT, that's unnamed tributary. That's your stream right here, your big one on Pathway Drive. Perennial means your big streams. It's always got water running through it. And, and except in cases of extreme drought or if someone develops upstream and moves Based on the perennial classification, you'll have 50-foot Zone One and 50-foot Zone Two buffers. And then on your ephemeral streams, which could be effectively a ditch if it's dry, it could be a spring loc, it could be a ditch downstream of a spring location. And obviously, as you've seen in those videos, during heavy rains, those are typically the channels that blow is rushing through, is your ephemeral streams. Those get 15-foot buffers.
Mr. Wirt, one more question here.
Yes.
You mentioned earlier discrepancy where the GIS showed 30-foot buffers.
Yes.
So for a diagram like this, are you showing the 30-foot or the 50? In other words, if we're looking at the, the diagrams where you're showing buffers, are those the 30-foot buffers being shown that are in the GIS? And we should imagine those being extended by an additional 40 feet in order to comply with our regulations?
Correct. So likely what happened, this isn't necessarily exactly what happened, but someone looked at developing this site sometime in the past. And Carrboro's code said, every perennial stream gets a 60-foot buffer total. You have two zones, they're 30 feet. Now, since that standard has been updated, since all of the surrounding neighborhoods has been developed, the buffers have increased to 50-foot aside. So when you go to develop, if you choose to do so, you have to follow the 50-foot regulation, not the 30-foot regulation. But the surveyor, who can, who is making an existing condition survey, can only rely on the GIS data that is existing at this time. Last note on this one is permitting. Like I, I touched on a little bit, if you're going to develop into zones and impact them, you got to get permitted. Two major permits are your 404 through the Army Corps of Engineers and your 401, that's from N C D E Q, the, the Water Resources Division, excuse me. And those permits have the allowable uses into buffers. So one, one allowable use is a perpendicular crossing to the stream. So if you wanted to put in a road across the stream to develop up here, you would have to get, you would have to go through state and federal permitting to do so on this stream.
Well, I have a question about the, the springs. Do any of the maps, I didn't know if any of the maps reflect where streams, the, the springs daylight and feed the stream or streams.
I don't.
Several springs.
Yes, ma'am. I don't believe that the, that the report identified springs as a classification. That could be for any number of reasons. One, because it's, it's not required by typical analysis practices, or two, they're dry, which is likely what happened when we went, when we went out to evaluate these. But the signs of, of ephemeral streams could indicate springs upstream or any of, or any number of other issues upstream, as I mentioned before.
Well, we know in rain events that the springs daylight.
Right.
We do know that. And there's evidence from, from the videos.
Right. And there is, there is supporting evidence with the groundwater elevation that we found on-site as well. So when it rains a lot, the ground fills up with water. It's going to spout out right at those, typically, I mean, obviously at the head of the ephemeral stream locations.
Right.
Down here. And then there were a lot here on Crest Street. And then you've got your, you've got your buffers over here. You also have an existing wetland. Wetlands in this case aren't necessarily what you think they are. They don't have water in them all the time. It's a, it's a little bit more of a soil, hydroxic soil classification, meaning that there's evidence that water has been there if it's dry or is, is deep in the soil. And those get buffers as well. So they get a 50-foot buffer. If they touch the edge of your buffer here, this is your Zone One buffer, then the, the stream gets it, or the wetland gets a Zone One buffer and it gets a Zone Two buffer way out here. But that, that leaves the subject property.
Is the rock underneath Crest the same as, I know it's all part of the slate belt, but does it follow the same? Because I know it's down slope, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wirt, a quick question here about, the report said that groundwater was found in a borehole on the Crest Street site. Do you happen to know sort of where that particular bore, where the groundwater was found, was located?
Yes, I do. It's, it's roughly right in the middle. It's right in the middle of, of the larger section here. I did not include that in this presentation, but it is in the geotech report. It's boring C3, I believe, which is right in the middle of that larger rectangular section.
Thank you. And a, a quick follow-up question on this one. Do we have the same issue with the width of buffers here? Or is this image showing the 50-foot buffer?
This image is showing the 50-foot buffer. You do have the same issue, though. 30-foot, 30-foot buffers were recorded on GIS.
Thank you.
The SIA summary. So covering the stormwater management requirements, we'll start with Pathway Drive. Pre and post-development runoff and volume match. Basically, as some people have brought up, they didn't see post-development numbers in the SIA. That's for two reasons. One is because in order to do post-development analysis, you have to have a concept plan at least. And we, that was not part of this scope, and we were not provided one by the town. In any case, however, you have to match your pre-development flows and your pre-development volume. So whatever was identified as pre-development flow, which we'll look at in a second on each of these sites, has to be matched or reduced in post-development. Up to the 25-year storm design, there was some mention about 100-year. Again, that's a Carrboro regular. Again, that's a Carboro regulation. Any development is subject to the rules of the AHJ, so 25-year is the limit. We considered onsite and off-site drainage areas, which we'll look at in a second. And on Pathway Drive, we defined a buildable area, which we showed as the red hatched area here and south of Pathway Drive here. We considered buildable area for a couple of reasons on Pathway Drive. One is because you have a large area that is unencumbered by easements or stream buffers. You have one ephemeral, or you have two ephemerals that you're touching. Those are much more easy to impact from a permitting standpoint. And, excuse me. It was to achieve a conservative design in the due diligence analysis. So for example, in reality, based on your zoning, which we didn't investigate too much because zoning would be linked to a concept plan. We were not, again, we, that was not part of this scope. But let's call buildable area anywhere you're putting a house or you're grading or you're putting a road or parking lot. It's not necessarily impervious area, meaning it's not necessarily asphalt or roofs or buildings. But for the purposes of this analysis, we considered it as such. In reality, there may not be buffer requirements between properties that are zoned the same. But you can go in there and clear and then replant the buffer if you chose to do so, again, based on the zoning regulations of the authority. And then we stayed out, we stayed out of the easement over here because you can't develop in a sewer easement. Then we, we looked at some dimensions, some typical right-of-way dimensions and road width dimensions and found that if it was so desirable, without considering topography and a bit, again, being conservative in our analysis, you could connect this larger parcel here, or this larger buildable area here, excuse me, down to a smaller one to increase density. Again, density is a choice of the developer. It's not something that we were given and it's not something that the zoning requirements necessarily specify. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So we've got pre-development. We do, we run all sorts of calculations and analysis to come up with these basic numbers. I'll try to go through them quickly. Total area is self-explanatory. Between the three parcels, you've got about 13 acres. Your composite curve number, that's a number that we assign based on your ground cover conditions in pre-development. Because you have a lot of rock and you have, and your soil types, that's what's considered bad hydrologic soils, meaning there's not a whole lot, I mean, as evidenced by those videos, there's not a whole lot of infiltration naturally going on right now. So 70 is really pretty high, it's out of 100. Once you go into post-development, excuse me. We considered post-development based on the drainage area maps. Post 1A is the buildable area that we're talking about here. We consider, we have a, we have a, a total area of the buildable area, or excuse me. It's a drain, 1A is a drainage area. The total area is 6.06. The buildable area within there is 3.15. And then the area to remain forested or to remain as pervious is 2.1, or 2.91. That comes to a curve number of about 85. Your time of concentration is how long it takes your flow to get from the highest point of your drainage area down to your lowest drainage area. So in those videos, you're at a low point in your drainage area. You're seeing the maximum runoff from, from a very large drainage area. And then for the 1 through 25-year storms, which are the storms you have to reduce between pre and post-development or match, are provided here. So your peak runoff for the one-year flows, about seven and a half. You produce about 32,400 cubic feet of volume of water in the pre-development condition. That's for a one-year storm. The videos that have been shared, that, those, that rainfall data indicated they're somewhere between a 10 and 25-year storm, probably on the upper, probably on the upper end of that range. Your flows are much higher. And so is your volume, obviously. We'll talk about in a minute how you can reduce runoff, obviously, but then also reducing volume by trying, by putting it back, back into the soil. Crest Street, largely the same deal. But, but because of all the buffers that impact the area of the Crest Street site, we didn't define as much of a buildable area here. We just assumed 24%. That's gonna be pretty conservative as it is, given the restrictions of permitting in buffers and the topography. That is a conservative assumption. So here is the Crest Street site, for example, you have all of your, let me see, yeah. So your Crest Street site is down here. We've got all our buffers in, in colored hatches here. And then all of your drainage area is defined by a point of analysis, which is low on your site. And you go up there reading the contours, how, how far off the site, based off the contour analysis, is what you're analyzing in pre versus post-development. Again, Crest Street's numbers come back largely the same. Time of concentration pre-development's really high. In, in post-development, it's really low. And your runoff and your volume numbers are provided there as well. So water quality, all of, Carboro is the authority having jurisdiction. Now, if this were to go to full permitting, because Carboro is also the owner of the site, you might not review it yourselves, meaning your staff might not be able to review it. But this, so the state might review it. However, the state's still gonna look at Carboro's land use ordinance. Article 16 covers most of the stormwater requirements, which require 85% total suspended solids removal. And then nutrient reduction as well, which is nitrogen phosphorus. You're trying to keep those targets at the quantities listed there. And that's to reduce biological impacts to your streams. So everything, so all of your runoff is not only retained, it's also treated through those SEMs. So stormwater control measures. We identified four that would be useful here and then gave you some pros and cons for them. Wet ponds, think of your typical pond. That's what a wet pond is, large volume and runoff production, or reduction. It's really good for handling that. It takes up a lot of space. So you have to reserve a lot of space to be able to build it. It takes a lot of grading, it takes a lot of clearing. It is the least expensive option of, you know, at scale of the rest of the SEMs identified. Bio-retention is, can be any multitude of things. You can split them in cells across the site. It allows for improved infiltration because there's a component of bio-retention or infiltration through an improved media in those devices. So instead of just controlling it, letting it sit and then running it out through a pipe or structure, you're actually putting it back into the ground. And then, because you're on rock, for example, if it can't go into the existing ground, can't go through the media into the existing ground, it's put in, it's, it's put in pipes and then let out the structure. And with that infiltration, that can typically take like up to 72 hours. So it, it, that's an option for greatly reducing volume and runoff. It's a low-impact development option, which we'll talk about later. It's very highly, it's very effective as a treatment device. Underground storage is expensive. It's, it reduces your, your visible impact on the site. It allows for the most- Density typically. Because you're not, you're not reserving any surface area to construct it. It's all going underground. Depending on your target stormwater rates, these usually have to be really big. So they get to be really expensive. And then permeable pavers, which is one of the best low-impact development options. Think of, you know, a parking lot full of pavers and then underneath the pavers is a large square section that runs the area of your parking lot or your road or what have you. And all of the water infiltrates through there and then does the exact same thing I just described with the bio-retention. If it can't infiltrate into the existing soil, it gets picked up in pipes and released out very slowly over the course of 72 hours. Permeable pavers are good because what falls out of the sky is immediately going in, infiltrating into those. So the drawbacks for them is that they're also expensive. They're also difficult to maintain well. So, but if they are maintained well, which takes a lot of effort, then they're highly effective for volume reduction and for runoff reduction. And so the last thing we looked at was low-impact development. Listing a few things quickly, obviously limiting your site clearing. That's a choice that the owner would make, depending on density. If it was a private developer, they would want to maximize density because they want to maximize profit. Promoting tree conservation goes along with clearing. Bio-retention, like we just talked about. Providing shared driveways instead of single driveways for each house to reduce impervious area. Relaxing setbacks, so if you can put houses closer up to, up to property lines and up to roads, you have a smaller area to connect, to provide connection to those houses. Think reducing sidewalk infrastructure, driveway infrastructure. Undisturbed buffers, similar to the stream buffers, providing those along the property line. Permeable pavers, which we talked about. Disconnected impervious is basically, instead of putting all of your runoff into the ground, into pipes, you allow it to disperse over a large impervious area. That's improved maybe with better infiltrating soil, lots of vegetation, so that it's not coming out concentrated at the end and washing out and scouring streams. Diffuse flow is, is that same concept. And then maintaining existing wetlands. If you have wetlands on site, keep them there. Those are natural stormwater control measures. And then rainwater harvesting is a green option for keeping your rainwater and using it for things that are, that gray water is allowed to be used for, like irrigation and, and things like that. So basically, in conclusion, again, no concept plan was provided with this scope of work. And the development, obviously, everything I just described is ultimately subject to the authority that's going to review it. If anything here is in violation of that, that authority is going to correct it and make us meet those particular standards. Think the buildable area is probably a lot higher than what's gonna be feasible. So it was a conservative design approach. In reality, the AHJ is gonna have concerns and the review process will likely reduce items like that. And then all stormwater improvements will have to meet Carboro's land use to ordinance, Article 6, and any state standards as well. Sometimes municipalities defer to state design standards, particularly for SEMs. So anyway, we appreciate the, the opportunity to present this to the town. And I'm available for questions, obviously. And I believe that there will be a public engagement component to this as well, to answer questions in the future as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wirt.
Thank you.
Council members, Councilmember Freya's had some questions. Anyone else? Our instructions are to receive the report, of course, and ask any clarifying questions about the report.
Madam Mayor, I think I got my questions in during the presentation, thank you.
And this is, I think, pretty basic clarification here. I suspect I have my answer. But when we, when we talk in the context of this report for suitability, we're not necessarily talking about desirability from a subjective standpoint, which is to say, this is not really in the context of comparison to other regularly developed kinds of land. It's strictly a potentially doable assessment.
Correct. If the, the goal of the report is to offer no opinion, only the objective analysis of what it would take to build on the site. You could, I mean, you might, could put a skyscraper on the site. You would obviously never do that, so. So there's no, there is, the goal was to have no opinion. So no desirability, like you say.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's really just for some of the community conversation around the sort of concept of suitability identified here. But I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you.
Councilmember Havan O'Donoghue. Yeah, um, thank you, Liam. I, um, so how, you know, as a deliberative body, one of the things that we need to figure out is, you know, what is the feasibility regarding the extensive engineering that would take? You can engineer anything. I mean, you could put something on Mars, I mean.
Right.
So it's not a matter of can you engineer this? It's, it's, were to be engineered, you know, how, with the obstacles that are at hand and the attendant, you know, impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods. How would we go about assessing whether or not to invest in a concept plan? Because that's expensive. So how, I mean, I'm trying to find out how do we get the kind of information that we need to know whether or not it's worth, you know, going forward, given that we want to build affordable housing?
Right.
And we're not looking to, you know, to do something that is gonna be astronomically expensive.
Right. So let's pretend for a second that you're a private developer. And I'll just speak, again, offering no opinion about the, the actual suitability of the site, but rather how you would do exactly as you asked, analyze it to see if you want to go forward with concept plans. Well, the main engineering components that in our line of work you would typically look at is, one, your grade across the site. So you know, as a, as a contractor or an owner, a developer, that's gonna be really expensive to build on. You're either going to have to flatten it out, which means more than likely bring in a lot of fill, or you're going to have to put steeper roads in there and all of your buildings are gonna have to be on high foundations. You know that going in, just looking at the survey. Again, you have this sewer easement on the edge of your property. So that takes away from developable area. Streams are, are a huge pain from a development standpoint. You have to permit them. You have to provide strict erosion control measures in construction and then the inspection throughout construction for stream impacts, for buffer impacts, is pretty intensive. So those are some components you could look at by just seeing this survey and say, well, let's, let's see if we bring in all this fill and flatten it out, how many townhome units we could get on for affordable housing. Or you might say, I don't want to fool with filling. I don't, I don't even want to look at it. I know it's gonna be too expensive. I know I'm not gonna get return on investment, again, pretending you're a private developer here. I don't want the site. So those are some of the components and decision-making, or, or some of the analysis you could do to decide whether you want to move forward with concept plans. Skipping back to our environmental maps here. Your buffers, particularly on your Crest Street site, is ate up with, with buffers and ephemeral streams and large streams and easements. So you know you can't build on an easement. And you can't build over top of sewer, obviously. You're gonna have to relocate if you want to maximize density. So those are things you know before you even start concept planning. And then the other thing I would add is like, what we see is, is sometimes projects go all the way through a concept plan, all, all the way to what we call a pre-application meeting. So we go and meet with the authority and say, this is what we're thinking. Talk to us about the regulations here. What are we missing? What did we miss in the land, in the land development ordinance? And then- And then, and then sometimes it gets killed there after you've put in quite a bit of capital to investigate whether it's actually desirable to do.
I really appreciate it. And I do, I went through the geo-technical. I'm going, I'm going to go back through it. I mean, I happen to like that stuff. But, but you know, it's, it's an extensive report. And is there any other information that we need regarding the, what did you call it? Oaks, environmental?
Three Oaks.
Three Oaks.
Their report is, is a part of the, of the report. Everything of the overall report. Everything that they've provided is, is as detailed as it would need to be for anyone in the industry, I'll say, to make a decision. Meaning like you, you have streams identified, you have buffers identified. Now, now you need to investigate what the permitting requirements for those are. You know, so that's, that's a starting point. And then another point I would add for the report overall is, I believe staff is still looking at it. If they want to see corrections to the analysis based off their DDO, based off of Carboro's land development ordinance, then they can provide that to us. We typically have discussions and we typically always make the corrections that they want to see.
Well, I think at this point for me, there's like one sort of clarifying question, which is sort of next in our town process would be like a staff response to this report. Yes? Great. So I guess with that in mind, you know, I think it's appropriate, given how much we've heard, to kind of just do a little orienting to where we are here as we often do with this. You know, we hear a lot of comments sort of about how could we find ourselves in this position to be considering this plot of land? I think, you know, just kind of zooming out, and this is available on the town site. You know, we, we find ourselves here after an intergovernmental task force between Chapel Hill and Orange County sort of prompted us to consider this tool of publicly owned land. And one of the reasons this is a really good tool for us is even as compared to possibly buying more suitable land, you know, this obviously takes a tremendous amount of the expense of the acquisition off the top. I think, you know, where we are here, we've heard some reference to the project or the development. You know, there have been some very tentative back-of-the-envelope numbers about possible units in absolutely preliminary discussions. But a project does not exist. A development does not exist. There is not a proposal for development concretely that we are considering or discussing. And I think what is appropriate to just take a moment to note is, you know, for me personally, and this is where I'm going to take a little detour into speaking just for me personally. You know, this is between two neighborhoods. So as I'm considering this as a, as a layperson and as a council member, it strikes me as within the ballpark of possible findings from a report like this, that we can deal with the slope. We can deal with the stormwater existence, steam, stormwater conditions as they exist. Possible retention measures might even improve the situation that residents are facing at the bottom of the hill. These seemed like findings that could potentially come back from this. What I am hearing individually is that we have some possible feasibility here, but real considerations about scale of efficacy. If we were to, if we were to consider this a meaningful intervention in our affordable housing supply, the expense of doing that, I think like we have real challenges on these plots of land that I think for me, when we hear back from staff, what the conversation then becomes incumbent on us as a board is the tolerance for finding out, our tolerance for these possible resource trade-offs. I, I'm hearing steep challenges. I'm hearing possible, real roadblocks. I think it behooves us, you know, just to continue to press on this a little bit. You know, when, when I walked the parcel and I, I talked with Jane and Gretchen and had, had a good visit and Diane. You know, the, one of the, one of the reasons we're here is we have so few possible resources in this conversation, in this conversation as a town. I don't think any of us really would, in a vacuum, identify this site. But our staff surveyed all of the land that we have. And getting to this point of this survey was the most reasonable course of action with the land that we have on hand, which is to say, last meeting, we received our community feedback, our community survey feedback. And, you know, with a bullet, the number one thing we heard over and over and over again was affordable housing. Affordable housing, need for affordable housing. Our possible interventions into this are very small in terms of meaningful scale and impact. I just sort of offer this to, just to assure everybody who's participated in this discussion that this has really been an open-ended exploration of, you know, pretty limited and competing resources. As an individual council member who has been supportive of the idea of exploring this, you know, I think it's not inappropriate to say that I think that this needs to prompt really serious conversations about whether this can be meaningful, but that we still have more process even before we would get to the point of even deciding whether we would want to proceed with a concept plan. So my anticipation is when we hear back from staff, there would be feasibility about the investment of a concept plan. There would be feasibility about the possibility of incorporating something this steep and wet and rocky into where we're headed with our L U O. I imagine we will hear some pretty big challenges about putting in units that would be a meaningful intervention in our affordable housing stock. And then I think it becomes incumbent upon us to decide, you know, exactly how dear a price we want to pay for exactly what kind of return. I'm not in love with the fact that we would have to do a ton of environmental, I guess, what's the word, intervention to learn a ton more about the site? I think that's a steep challenge. All of which is to say, you know, this is, we are still pretty early in a process that does not have a defined endpoint. And that I think that this has been a tremendously valuable. I really appreciate your work, Will, and, and the entire Summit team. I think it has helped us have not a granular sense of a plan and expense, but, but a much more serious sense of, you know, just what we're not able to do looking at a parcel of land, you know, in terms of real understanding its relation to the building process. And so, you know, I think, I just kind of want to put the conversation as we potentially move forward from this agenda item around the idea that there is still, we're, we're still in a very flexible phase of the process. And that we are not, what we are now reacting to is fact-finding of like a pretty open-ended nature and not really in relation to a particular project or concept. And then I think we all take pretty seriously the idea that we're going to have to weigh the investment in even reaching that point. So sorry to be a little long-winded, but just, I know that this has been an important issue and I really want folks to understand how engaged we have been with it and that I personally am with it and how helpful this report has been in the discussion. So thank you very much, Will.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protim Nowell. Councilmember Frey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I just want to pull on a couple additional threads from, from what Mayor Protim Nowell has said. One of those is for anybody following this process at home. These are the best town-owned lots we have for affordable housing. It does not make them good. It just makes them the best that we have. And that's a, now that we have some more granular information about the challenges that we are looking at, that tells us, you know, where our next steps are. It is unfortunate that there is not, I'm, I'm looking at what somebody said. There is not an ample amount of flat land in Carboro to purchase for this kind of, of project. There are points at which we may need to ask ourselves as a body, would we prefer to have a smaller number of affordable units or nothing on town-owned land? Because that is really what we are coming down to. It is not interchangeable with just go get more land elsewhere. I also think as a town, we're going to have to get really, really creative to make a dent in the affordable housing crisis that we have got. Let me see here. I think the other point that I wanted to draw on from that. No, you know what? I think that'll do it. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frey. Anyone else? But, uh, Merrill?
We are early in this, this framework as we continue to explore. I feel like we're on like maybe step three or, or something like that. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's still really early. This is a very important piece of the framework. Mr. Word, I thank you for your work and also for your report. And I, I would like to just kind of see, you know, where we can go next. That would come from our staff. And I was wondering, Anne Marie back there? I was wondering if Anne Marie could talk a little bit more about the next phase of staff review since we now have this very full report from Summit and Three Oaks Engineering. Thank you, Anne Marie. Just so everyone knows, you know, kind of where we are post-report that I'm sure folks will continue to read through the next couple of weeks.
Step one still.
Oh, it's still, oh, even farther back. Okay.
Land has been identified. Been made and, you know, as you all said, these are the best parcels that rose to the top for looking at for possible affordable housing use. And the due diligence report that we did, that is still step one. Staff has not had a chance to go through it. So that is, that is the next thing that we need to do. And we can do that over the summer and come back in the fall with a report. I'm sure that they will find things in there that we need to look at a little bit harder. And, you know, as the community and as you all go through the reports yourselves, I'm sure that you'll have more questions. So that's where we are. In the meantime, we'd like to do a public engagement piece with the community, with Carboro residents, just to talk about this process that we've gone through. And since the report is, is out there to take questions and just kind of talk that process through. And we'll see where we are in the fall and hopefully have enough information by the fall to determine how you would like to proceed.
So would you do the staff review side-by-side with the public engagement? Or would you do it post-staff review or what, what is staff thinking?
I think the planning can be concurrent, but I think, I think the staff review can, can get started while it's still fresh.
Okay. That's all I have for Anne Marie. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Anne Marie. Appreciate it. So we have received, we're receiving the report from Summit Design and Engineering as well as, what, what is it again? Three?
Three Oaks Engineering.
Three dog night. And again, we thank you for the report and all the work that went into, to bringing this to us. And the report, the report is received.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmembers have any other questions? Correct?
Yep. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Assistant Town Manager Parker. We have the ordinance amending the Carboro Town Code to create paid parking in certain public parking locations. There is some concern about the hour and if it would be more feasible to, I guess, do some more work over the summer, bring the item back first business meeting in September. But of course, that is up to the rest of the council. I'm just putting forth and do want to hear what everyone else thinks about that. John has remained here. I see him in the back. And so we can do whatever you guys want to do, but I did just want to put out that.
I don't mind jumping in. I'm sort of of two minds leaning toward pushing this out further. I think we released our survey on, I believe, the 13th. Been limited, I think we have all heard in that time, quite a bit of public discussion, all of which indicates that quite a bit more discussion is necessary. And I think that we, you know, in early days have some pretty rich ideas on this board about what might make an effective ordinance, but that it would not be the kind of thing we could act on tonight. Given that, at least what I have heard personally has been in, you know, we, we've been dealing with this situation for a long time. I'm hearing residents not want a ton of haste, which I can understand. And that we won't be acting tonight and that our procedures manual identifies that we wouldn't take up a new item this late. You know, I, I have asked for urgency on this item. I am of, kind of of a mind to like, let's bite down and do it. But realistically, we need to talk about this for like an hour and get a minimum. And given the procedures manual and the fact that we're not going to be acting tonight, I think that it would be most appropriate to push, but I can be absolutely swayed on this if there's an appetite to talk about it.
Anyone else?
Given, given our procedures, I think we're going to have to push it. My question is, do we want to, do we want to add a special meeting in August to come back to this sooner without disrupting the agenda pattern for September?
Is the agenda pattern such that that would be necessary? Do we, I mean, do we have a firm enough sense of the fall to?
We probably could get it on the first business meeting, couldn't we? We're not that far out in planning.
When is the first business?
September 17th, I think.
The 10th is a work session, right? Assistant Town Manager Parker?
That's correct. The 17th would be the first business meeting.
Thank you. So that's, that's where we would be without a special meeting.
I think it'd be a good time to wait till the fall and make sure more people are aware that this is coming up. Because I think that the word only just really got out there.
So over the summer, what, what is the, is there an opportunity? We will use, staff use that for community engagement and public education? And so we would be geared up?
That would give us more time to conduct more community engagement. Madam Mayor, that works for me.
Works for me too. Looks like it works for Councilmember Merrill.
I'm ready for bed.
I know. I know what you mean. I know what you mean. And so is, no motion is needed, right? For that, we've just decided pretty much that we're going to move that item to, to September.
I think we just need to table it until September.
So I moved that we tabled this item until the first business meeting back in the fall session?
Thank you. All right. So it's been moved and properly seconded that we table the parking, paid parking ordinance item to September 17th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, John, for hanging out in the back. Shout out to John.
Trying to get you your feedback.
I think it's been, I do think it's been really productive to have the ordinance and this process started. And even just the language that we have going into the summer is really going to help us. So thank you so much, John, truly.
I, I think we have one matter by a council member. I believe it's Councilmember Posada.
Yeah, I'll be really quick about it. I know that we all want to go home, so very quickly, as members, I've talked to you all individually and I talked to our town clerk about adding pronouns to the name badges on the table. From the conversation, we just needed an affirmative from council members that you all want to do that so we can move forward. And then our town clerk can speak with you all individually as to what pronouns you wish to be portrayed on your plaque. So yes, so I just want to get an affirmative from council members that you're willing and up to having your pronouns on your name badges portrayed for community. Yeah.
I think it's great.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Posada. He's done his due diligence and talked to every single one of us. I think unanimously, we would roll with that, with whatever pronouns that each one of us would like to have on the nameplate. So I don't see any issue there. Do we need a formal?
I just need to just.
We don't need a formal vote.
We just needed an affirmation that we are willing to do that. And I guess the town clerk will.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure Lamar has instruction about that. Councilmember Posada, thank you. Motion to adjourn for, for the entire summer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.